This, then it goes on. So now it's on. It has to warm up.
This is the Newington Board of Education, December 13th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reward for which it stands, foundation, honor, and the discipline of liberty and justice for all. As we jump into tonight's agenda, a couple of things first. We still get complaints about speaking into the microphone, so please make sure you're speaking directly into it, it's pointed at your face. Second, we have an additional agenda item that we'd like to add in regards administrative salary ranges, and it would be an action item. If I could ask for someone to suspend the rules to add that agenda item?
No suspension of rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
And Mrs. Braverman, Dr. Braverman, is there any discussion on the suspension of the rules? Mr. Silvia?
Can you share sufficient information for us to make a determination this evening on, is there an action or is this a discussion?
It would be an action item. It's a follow-up from the Executive Finance Committee meeting from earlier this week. And we can, we can, would you like more information on what it is?
Well, I'd like to understand, basically, I don't need names, but I'm trying to understand what our current followers are, and if they fall within the existing range, or we've got anybody that's already at the ceiling that they need to have experience?
We can certainly discuss that once we're in that agenda item, if it's added on for the discussion before a vote if anywhere to take place.
If there are any informations available, I have no objection.
I believe it is, okay. Any discussion on suspending the rules? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspending the rules to add that agenda item?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Can we have a motion to add that agenda item? It will be item number nine. It will read "Action-Administrative Salary Ranges."
I think that we need to add an agenda item, an action item.
The administrative salary ranges. Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Braverman. In a second, by Mrs. Guyon, is there any discussion on adding the agenda item? Seeing none, all those in favor of adding the agenda item?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We have now agendated our item. There's now action item number nine under new business. We are now back in regular rules as we have completed the task of suspending them, and we'll go to item B on our agenda, Presentations of Awards Proclamations. The first item is Education Foundation Fall Grants, and I believe Mrs. Morocco will be providing us an update on the Newington Education Foundation's mini-grants.
Thank you, Mr. Schulman. It's with great pleasure that I share with you, the Newington Education Foundation has made adjustments into how they're awarding mini-grants. For those members of the Board of Education and the community who have followed the NEF over the several years that they have been a foundation, supporting the Newington Public Schools proposals from teachers. This year, they decided to have an opportunity for anyone interested, teachers, administrators, to submit mini-grants on a rolling basis. So teachers throughout the school year are welcomed and encouraged to support, to submit Newington Education Foundation mini-grant award requests. And their next meeting in January, they have six requests to review. So a member of the NEF, Dr. Google or one of the directors, will be more than happy in May to attend and share with you the exciting news of how this new strategy is increasing the requests for NEF mini-grants.
Are there any follow-up questions for Mrs. Morocco? Seeing none, thank you for that update, Mrs. Morocco. It's a great program that the Newington Education Foundation runs for our teachers. We'll now move on to item C of our agenda, public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Our phone line is open at 860-665-8736. Seeing no public and the phone lines are not ringing, we'll move on to our consent agenda. For the benefit of our newer members, this is how we approve our minutes from the previous meetings. Because it's a consent agenda, a motion gets read by Dr. Braverman, and then we all have an opportunity to raise any objections we would have to approving the agendas. So long as there are no objections, the motion passes, and the minutes for the meetings previously have been approved by the board. So, Dr. Braverman, I'd ask you to read that consent motion.
All right. The consent agenda consists of approval of minutes from October 11th, 2017, a regular meeting, approval of minutes for November 14th, 2017, an organizational meeting, and approval of minutes of November 28th, 2017, of the board retreat. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
In a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Guyon. Anyone have any objections to the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We will now move on to item E, old business, of which we have none, and item F of our agenda, new business. First, the standing committee information items. The executive, Joint Executive Finance Committee met on Monday of this week. We met with Dr. Collins primarily to discuss very preliminary thoughts on the budget as he's putting it together. He has gotten all the information from the schools and the classroom teachers about their needs and requirements, and he's trying to craft a budget that will make everyone happy as best as he can, and will do the things that the school system needs our budget to do. So we had a short discussion about that and what to expect as we move forward. For anyone watching, the budget will be presented on January 24th at our meeting at 7:00 PM. We also discussed administrative salary ranges with Mr. Farisi, and that is now agenda item nine under new business, so we will discuss that a little bit further later. Does anyone have any questions about that Executive Finance Committee meeting? Seeing none, we also have our student representatives here with us tonight, and I just wanted to say a couple of words before you guys start. Matt, I got to talk to you before the meeting briefly. For anyone watching and everyone around the table, you notice that our student reps are now sitting at the table with us, as it was intended when the program was created. Student representatives are actually members of the Board of Education. They are just non-voting members. We all pretty much believe that they should be at the table with us whenever they're able to be here, and we certainly know you have incredibly busy lives. Please stay for as much of the meeting as you can. We've now extended the invitation to come to all of our meetings, not just meetings where you're giving these monthly reports, and we will appreciate at appropriate times throughout the year, comments from you, questions from you. I will certainly always accept questions from you after the meetings for anything you're confused about, or have guidance on, or before meetings to understand what's going on. But I think it's important for the community to understand that we have two student members who are giving up their time to be here on a volunteer basis, to bring back information to the student body, to bring information from the student body to us, and in that way have an incredibly valuable experience learning how town government operates, being here throughout the budget process for as much of it as you can be, and then getting "Sorry, I missed my homework cards" from me to your teachers in case the meetings run too late. And I'm sure Dr. Collins is happy about that comment. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to the two of you for your report.
Good evening. My name is Prachi Deway.
And I'm Matthew Plort.
First off, we would like to congratulate everyone on their election or reelection to the Board of Education.
We are very excited to get to know and speak with all of you about Newington School students' lives and education over the course of the year.
To begin with our report, we would like to discuss Newington athletics. First off, for girls' basketball, the varsity team won their first game on Monday, beating Berlin 55 to 52. Currently, they are facing Newington's rival, Weathersfield. Girls volleyball, the varsity team won the conference championships for the 2017, 2018 school year. This will add one more year to their respective sign in the gym. For cross-country, it's official, the NHS cross-country team became this year's Connecticut Conference champions, beating out rival Weathersfield and other teams in the region. And the Newington Knights cheerleading middle school team came in third place in Nationals.
Now moving on to things having to do with the Newington High School. First of all, the honor roll came out last week and for the first quarter, and about 25% of students achieved high honors this year, and about 35% achieved honors. Also, the grade level, with the highest number of honor roll students was the freshman class, who accounted for almost 30% of all honor and high honor recipients in the first quarter. Now moving on to student council, the homecoming dance took place on November 4th and was a success. Every ticket purchased included a donation to hurricane relief organizations. The pep rally was also a hit this year. People said it was one of the best they've ever been to. And we shaved two faculty members' heads to benefit Heavenly Hats, and we dunked Mr. Zacco and Ms. Tigno into a dunk tank because of our Penny War charity collection. It was great to see the strong bonds between faculty and students become even stronger.
For DECA, members have been making blankets for those who were affected by the recent hurricanes. Some also attended the power trip, which took place in November, and provided students with the opportunity to improve their leadership skills, as well as allow them to attend conferences. Also, members have been preparing for the competition which will take place in March. For National Honor Society, many members are beginning to conduct their mandatory service projects. One of the current projects involves donations which will be delivered to veterans. Another project involves the making of paper cranes which will be delivered to a local hospital to be used as a decoration. The senior prom committee has been planning the upcoming senior prom, and the theme and menu are currently being decided. Yearbooks are now on sale for $82 to those interested in purchasing, and we have issued our first issue of The Scribe, which is our school's newspaper. Mr. Retigliano and a few students have put this together after several years of not having one. Students were able to view it during homeroom, and it's also available on the front page of our school's website.
On November 22nd, we had our annual alumni panel, which had former NHS seniors attend in the auditorium and answer questions about their experiences thus far outside of high school. Students have said that the program is very beneficial for them and that they truly do enjoy it. Also, for Veterans Day, which was on November 12th, but we had school on November 11th, so we observed it, students were able to write letters and draw pictures to veterans, with some going to the VA hospital and others going around the entire country through different organizations. Many classes also held veteran guest speakers, had veteran guest speakers come and talk to students about their experiences and the importance of veterans in our lives. My Spanish teacher, specifically Karina Ramos, she had a Hispanic veteran come to our class and speak in Spanish throughout the entire presentation, which we also got to learn a lot about the curriculum and at the same time appreciate our veterans even more. A lot of students and my fellow classmates have also said they really enjoyed getting to speak with veterans. Also, students at John Patterson filled out forms to recognize their family members who were veterans.
A couple weeks ago, we participated in the Hour of Code. Mr. Kerr ran the Hour of Code, which is when students engage in simplistic coding activities such as clicking and dragging blocks to resemble coding. These activities have been altered by using familiar cartoon characters to be more appealing toward younger individuals throughout the country.
Now moving on to the NHS Music Department, the Chamber Choir, which I am a part of, will be embarking on its three-day New York City winter tour this Friday. The trip will see the group perform at the Empire State Building on Friday, as well as see two Broadway performances throughout the weekend. For the musical, which this year is Beauty and the Beast, the first rehearsal for that will be taking place on December 19th, and we're all very excited. The winter concert was held yesterday. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So we are taking a bus from the school to the New Haven train station, and then going from the train station to Grand Central.
Is that a Newington bus or a charter?
A Newington bus takes them to the train station.
One of our buses in our fleet. So now we can go out of state?
New Haven.
Bus is taking them to New Haven. Oh, to New Haven.
To the train stations.
Train station. Thank you. Thank you. All right. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Of course. For the winter concert, the winter concert at NHS was held last night. The men's chorus, women's chorus, and the chamber choir all performed both holiday and pop songs, and everybody really enjoyed it. Now moving on to highlight one of, one specific student at NHS, which I'm sure you all have heard of, Eric Venables, who went to the NAFME All-Nationals Choir held at Disney World in Florida, has since come back, and Eric said that he loved the experience and that he was able to learn a lot. However, he did say that there's nothing like being back at his small high school choir, where he can be a leader for everyone and teach everything, things that he learned.
Students in grades nine through 12 will participate in Kindness Week in January, with activities taking place each day centered around kindness. The event will be truly school-wide, as leaders and advisors from the classes, National Honor Society, DECA, and Student Council will be meeting tomorrow to begin planning activities. The idea was inspired from the past DECA conference, in which students heard of a social movement known as "Because I Said I Would," which utilizes volunteerism as a means of making and keeping promises. Newington High School has received a grant, sorry, to make kindness rocks, which are rocks with positive sayings on them. The high school also plans on reaching out to other schools around the state to join in.
Now, moving on to the middle and elementary schools, Elizabeth Green, Anna Reynolds, and Ruth Chaffee all have their winter concerts coming up. Elizabeth Green's will be held on December 19th, and Anna Reynolds and Ruth Chaffee's will both be held on December 14th. And John Patterson will also have their winter concert on December 14th, and the students will be attending a sing-along on December 22nd to kick off the holiday break.
This is a comment from Student Council's Faculty Appreciation Committee Chair Monica Sadel. She was hoping to implement two additional townwide administrators/guidance counselor days. We would like to honor them as they offer advice, motivation, and a welcoming learning environment. Also, since we already honor bus drivers, custodians, teachers, nurses, et cetera, we feel that it would be nice for administrators and school counselors to be honored as well.
That's all we have for you tonight. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for our student reps? Mr. Sylvia?
First, I'd like to say thank you very much for having them at the table. Symbolically, it means a great deal to me, because I have always believed that our student representatives are part of this board. So being at the table over there was very disrespectful, in my opinion. The second question I have is, I know they can't vote, but can they participate in discussions on our agenda items?
It's my intention to have them participate when appropriate, yes.
Thanks. Thank you very much for the update, and I look forward to your participation.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments on the student representative reports? Thank you both very much. And Prachi, I know that you have something, a commitment, so if now is when you need to leave.
I might be able to stay.
Whatever works. And for the future, for any meetings, you don't have to let us know if you're going to be able to be here or leave early, just, obviously you guys know, just leave quietly, and that's absolutely fine, we understand. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, there are name tags at the table.
Absolutely, just like any bus. We will now move on to new business item one, a discussion on textbook selections. I'll turn that over to Mrs. Morocco.
Thank you, Mr. Schulman. I apologize, on your cover memo, it said that there are six new books. There were originally six, one was removed, and so there are only five books being presented this evening for your approval. The first two books are for the Grade Six Social Studies, which has been adjusted to align with the new C-3 framework, so they're studying Central America, the Caribbean, Latin America, and Cuba. So their first book, Behind the Mountains, is a fiction book that follows the story of a 13-year-old. It's an arduous journey from her mountain village in Haiti to join her father in Brooklyn, which is a pretty common story that you would hear as new immigrants come into the States. The story includes daily activities, as well as some of the struggles that the family was presented with upon their relocation and reconnection to the United States. All books will be available in the superintendent's office if anyone would like to read them. The second Grade Six book is A Taste of Salt, which is a story of modern Haiti. So again, you can see that they're reading novels and literature that's coming from the areas that they're studying geographically and historically, so that it's also bringing it into today. This fiction actually has sort of a real life, almost a little historical fiction. It's based on the life of a real person, but told in a more narrative, story-like manner. And it's about a young boy who is actually injured in a bombing with some street gangs in Haiti. So it's, again, showing students some of the challenges that they might not face living here in the States, but some of our immigrant families do face as they come into the U.S. So those are two books that support the reading in social studies that are part of the ELA standards that have come through when the Common Core was first introduced. We introduced reading standards in the content area of social studies and science. So you're going to hear that four of the five books are really bringing that reading of literature and reading of informational text into social studies. In Grade Seven, their shift now is into Asia and Africa, and this is a long walk to water. And this is actually both an actual character and a fictional character combined in this story, and it includes the true story of Salva Dut, of the Dinka tribe, and a Sudanese lost boy. And then a fictional part of it is with a story of a young village girl, Naya, and this book really supports the challenge that are faced by the lost boys and their journey. So that will be in Grade Seven. Also in Grade Seven, this story is called Ayam Malala, and this is how one girl stood up for education and changed the world. And you've probably heard about her and saw her on TV, because she was a Nobel Peace Prize winner. And Malala Yousafzai was only 10 years old when the Taliban took over her village in Pakistan, and it was really transformed from a very quiet, friendly village to a village of terrorism. And this is really her story. She almost lost her life when she was shot, and she was shot because she was speaking forward about education for women and children. I've read the book, it's a moving story, so if you'd like to read it before it goes back to Mrs. Antonia, will be in the superintendent's office. The last book is a book for Grade Eight, and this is really an informational text with the C-3 framework. Some of how we're looking at U.S. history has also been shifted. So we're no longer separating U.S. history in Grade Seven and Grade Eight, we've now placed it in Grade Five and Grade Eight, and then at the high school. And this is a text that brings U.S. history forward in a viewpoint that is really more appropriate for adolescent to understand and be able to see how life was, not just what we read about in history, but it really does bring to life stories about life during this period of U.S. history. So those are the five new books that are moving into the social studies curriculum.
Thank you, Mrs. Morocco. Questions, Mr. Vasella?
Just wanted to, is Lucy Robbins made aware when we add books into our curriculum so that they can purchase them to have at the library also?
I don't believe so, Mr. Vasella.
I just think it would be a good cooperation, maybe, to put between the libraries and the school, if, you know, when we're getting new curriculum material, especially in the language arts area.
It's a great suggestion, I'll make sure we do that.
Yeah, and even if, even if they aren't purchasing the same books, things in a similar vein or by the same authors would be an interesting addition for kids to be able to go in.
I do, I do believe these are two books that are on their shelves. It's a great idea. I'm sure they are.
But some of the other ones, especially Haiti, I was interested in.
Mr. Sylvia? Mr. Sylvia?
If I could piggyback your suggestion, I mean, instead of them sitting on our shelves not being used, if we could, if there are a few extras, if we could let the library have them, or use them?
Because we don't buy a book per student, we usually don't have extra, we buy class, a class set, and the teachers share those, and these are usually used not for whole-class instruction, but for small group, literature group, reading in the social studies classrooms.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from Mrs. Morocco? Seeing none, as she said, these books will be available in the superintendent's office, so if you want to review any of them more closely, please feel free to do so. They will be back on our agenda on the January 24th meeting, which would be our adoption date to approve the purchase of these textbooks for the curriculum.
Why not the 13th?
Later on in the agenda, I believe we'll be canceling the January 10th meeting in preparation for an additional meeting in January.
Thank you.
We are now moving on to item number two, discussion of board committee assignments. These assignments were handed out to everyone at our last meeting right after the election. By now, everyone's had a chance to look at them, we've had a couple of meetings. I have not heard from anyone regarding their assignment. I'll say again, if anyone has any concerns over anything, or, you know, needs something to be changed, please let me know, and we can discuss that. Otherwise, as we all know, every meeting is open to not only our committee members, but members of the public, so even if you're not on a committee, please feel free to go to those committees. Most of the voting happens at full board meetings anyway, so the committees are free for everyone to participate. Is there any further discussion on the assignments? Seeing none, we will move on to number three. It's an action item to adopt our board priorities for 2017 to 2019. These are the priorities that we discussed at our board retreat a few weeks ago. Dr. Braverman and I had one discussion, I didn't hear from anyone else, about any concerns or requests for changes. What I'll ask is for, are we voting? Do we need to vote on this? Okay. So I want to ask is for someone to make a motion to adopt these as our priorities, and then we can have a discussion if anyone wants to. Ms. Stam, can you, can you read a motion for us? Yes.
The question that had come up was the wording of proficient.
Right, for the world language, and we should discuss that. Once we, once we make the motion and second it, we then move into our discussion, and we will talk about that then. So, Mrs. Stam?
So I'm just making a motion to?
To adopt the priority, these priorities as ours for 2017 to 2019.
Make a motion, the board, adopt the Board of Education priorities for 2017, 2019.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Guyon. Any discussion? Mrs. Droes.
Was there a change in the wording for the world language for students to be proficient instead of fluent? Was that officially changed?
There is a change on this document, and I guess the question to the board is whether or not we want to keep that word, or use the word fluency that we did for the last two years, and I think we might, we might as well start with Mrs. Morocco, who had requested that change from us.
After speaking with Mrs. Vasal, who is our world language coordinator, in order to actually be fluent, we would need to consider over the next two years of having a K to 12 world language program. And so it is really more appropriate to say that a student would be proficient, which means that they would have general ability to speak if they were visiting a country who spoke Spanish at this point, because our world language begins in Grade Eight.
And just as a clarifying question, does that, what we had been doing for the last few years was shifting our focus towards fluency? And so proficient, proficiency is still on the fluency tracks? That doesn't change our goal at all?
It's before fluent. It's sort of a precursor to fluent, you have to be proficient before you become fluent. And fluent requires reading, writing, and speaking, and listening. And proficient means that you usually can speak it and read it, but your written context may be weaker.
Board comment on this change from what we had done in our retreat? I.e., who's in favor of that? Who wants to keep it fluency?
I agree with Pam.
You would like it to be proficient? Mr. Branda?
I would like it to be proficient as well.
Okay. Is anyone still on the fluency bus?
I think fluency has a connotation that you can really speak fast, understand everything, carry on a conversation, write things down. That's pretty hard to do if you've just learned it in school, even if you're really good at language, so proficient probably makes more sense.
Okay. Mrs. Guyon, did you have a comment?
I guess I, I would love for them to be fluent. Do we change, I guess, thinking about the way that you just worded that before, is this still on the goal to fluency? Doesn't change our goal in the way that we teach things? If we change it to proficient, does that bring it down a level? Or does that, how would that change our action, I guess, is my question.
It sounds to me that it doesn't change our actions at all. It sounds to me that it doesn't change our actions at all. To me, what it does is changes the public perception of what our goal is though, because proficient versus fluent is clearly a term of art in world language. But to the general public and to us, it means, well, to me at least, means something different when you're shooting for proficiency versus fluency. So I, you know, I would, I'm not convinced that we should change it to proficient, even though I sincerely appreciate Ms. Vasal's note that what we are actually doing with our action items right now is trying to create proficient students. I just don't like the way it sounds, but...
I think the, just to point of clarification, the administration fully understands the board's wishes here. And I know Ms. Vasal would love to head in that direction. I think she needs the tools. I think we have a couple more steps before we can probably use that word. But we're definitely on that track. It's a night and day shift from where we were a couple years ago.
Absolutely. And no one's questioning that. This is really a semantic change. I just like the word fluency. Mrs. Stam?
And just to really, what I don't want it to do is want people to look at our strive for the languages on the core. That is our goal, is to make kids more, you know, able to be fluent. So I don't want people to say, to lessen that as far as what we really want, because that strive for us, to have that on the core, I don't want people to say, "Well..." Then we don't have to have it on the core if you're just going for proficiency. And I don't want that to be what people are thinking, because we really do want to strive for fluency if we can. So...
Mrs. Strohs?
I think, well, and I'm just trying to think, like, we're always shooting for proficiency in math, we're shooting for proficiency, you know, when we talk about, is a child proficient in this subject area? And I agree that it's semantics. I think when I hear the word fluent in another language, you're thinking it. You can, you know, you've mastered all of there is to master. And I think until you are really involved in that culture, like living overseas or visiting overseas, I don't think fluency is something that is attainable, in my opinion. So I think proficiency is a better word to accurately tell people what we're striving for. Just an opinion.
Any further board comment? Mrs. Stam?
I agree. I do agree with that. I know that to be really entrenched in the language, you have to experience that with that. I just know that we have, in previous years, this Board of Education, when I wasn't on it, had a clear focus and goal. And I just want to make sure that everyone is certain and know that we still have that focus and goal.
Mrs. Guyan?
Yeah, I agree with what Cindy has said as far as not wanting people to think that we've lowered our standards. And also, yeah, we, I guess I feel the same way about the word of proficient, just feels, it feels less. And I don't want, yeah, like, well, we want them to be proficient and not...
I'd love for them to be fluent in math and English as well, you know? So I mean, yeah. So we do, like I said, we're very, very clear on where the board wants to go with this. And so I kind of agree with the wording change. I'm stronger with it as well. But I also have to face reality. And then I know it's probably going to be a few years before we're able to implement a K-12 world language program, which is what Ms. Vasal tells us to provide.
You must have an interesting definition of a few doctor comments.
So, right.
Generation or two.
So grandchildren will probably be in the seat before.
But understood. Mr. Sylvia, did you have a comment? Okay.
I just will say, I understand where, I understand all of, logically, all of that makes sense. I just, that wording is a little bit of a hangup, that's all.
I, I think we've kind of reached the end of this discussion. What I would say is, anyone who wants it to say fluency, raise your hand? Two and a half. Anyone who wants to say proficiency? Two and a, three, four. And anyone who doesn't really have an opinion because it's semantics. Mr. Sylvia and Mr. Tufel. And the winners of today are Mr. Sylvia and Mr. Tufel because they are correct. None of our action plans will change. We will keep proficiency in there because the majority of the board likes that change. Are there any other comments on any of our priorities before we vote to on the motion that's been made? Dr. Braverman?
Just on the proficiency, for the modern languages, the students can take those classes at Central after three, so that might be a way for them to get more proficient as they go. Maybe we'll aim towards fluency.
A very good plug for the program that Dr. Braverman has helped bring to Newington, our agreement with Central for students to take classes tuition-free, which we can never thank you enough, Dr. Braverman, for your work on that.
Modern languages are usually, a lot of times, open, so...
Right, and we have had, we've had had handful of students that have taken advantage of that since the program started last year.
I think there were 18 in the fall.
Eighteen, wow. That's incredible. Any other comments on our priorities?
I did have one other thing. We had talked a little bit about, my comment was to see if students, make sure students love school. And then you had talked about assessment that we use that's separate from, can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, Wendy can actually probably talk about it. She's the, so we're talking about the, when we poll students, so they do the, yeah.
I wasn't privy to the conversation, so I'm assuming you mean the third grade survey? With the third grade students?
Safe school climate.
Yeah. Mrs. Maraca, actually, can you respond to that better than I can? As part of the district safe school climate, we survey students in grades three, seven, and 11 every two years. And we get their feedback on how well-connected they feel to their school, how safe they feel, if they like school, if they have friends. So it really tells us more about that affective domain about how they feel about school. So we do collect that data.
And for the benefit of the public, one of the discussions we had our retreat, Dr. Braverman and many of us agreed with her, felt very strongly that one of the things we should be prioritizing as a district is making sure our students love going to school and enjoy learning. And one of our priorities is providing a safe, supportive, and healthy culture. And one of our action plans, as Ms. Maraca just described, is trying to track whether or not kids are having that kind of connection with school, which is something that we should definitely continue to talk about as we move forward, what other things we can implement to make sure that our kids are having a healthy relationship with their education.
Does it make sense then to use those words, safe school climate assessment, as one of our priorities?
It is one of your priorities. If you look down, one, two, three, four, six.
So that provides safe, supportive, and healthy culture is the...
Oh, that's the one.
Yep. Is there any further comments on any of our priorities? Mr. Plorn, you have a question?
Yes, I obviously wasn't at this board retreat. I wasn't invited. But I, and I'm not sure if I have a list of the board priorities here, but if someone could read those to me or if there is a list that I have, thank you.
And we should read them for the public. And they are available online for anyone at home on their computer, at our website. If you go to the minutes date, it should be part of our packet. So for the public's benefit, if we want to, want to kind of go around and everyone can read a priority, so I'm not just saying all of them. We will start with, our priority is to improve student achievement. We'll go to Mrs. Guyan.
Ensure all students are college career and citizenship ready.
Optimize the integration of technology into instruction.
Increase access to early childhood education.
Provide interfractal of facilities optimal for learning.
Provide a safe, supportive, and healthy culture.
Increase opportunities for extended and enhanced learning.
Increase the number of students who are proficient in two or more languages.
Attract, develop, support, and retain professional talent.
Continue support for the arts, athletics, and student activities.
Recognize ability of the community to support education.
Address state and federal initiatives.
And those are the list of our priorities. If there's no more comment from the board, I would say all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the priorities have been adopted unanimously. We will now move on to agenda item four. It's an action item to establish dates for the review of the superintendent's proposed 2018-2019 budget. They are on the second page of that document, listed out in a nice table. Wednesday, January 24th will be the presentation of the superintendent's budget to the Board of Education. Following week importantly, Mr. Brandon and Ms. Strohs, are our two workshop dates, January 30th and January 31st. The January 30th meeting starts at 6:00 PM and it's a Tuesday. January 31st meeting is a regular Wednesday meeting. That is where we go over line by line every single part of our budget. We have everyone who's responsible for those areas here around the table with us to ask as many questions as we want. We used to do this on one night, but 12:00 PM is too late. 12:00 AM is too late to end a meeting, so we do it over two nights. Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am confused with a comment that's on the second paragraph stating, "It is important to note that we begin this budget process 1.73% below zero due to the financial arrangement recommended by the town council." I think we need a little bit more definition of what is below zero. I take it that this is the hole, right?
I think what it refers to is the fact that we're using $1.2 million from our contingency account for our operational budget under our agreement with the town council. And so that when we look at our budget from next year, when we're starting at zero percent, that means filling in that hole for the staff that we're paying salaries for out of a contingency account that doesn't have additional money coming into it.
Mr. Chairman, given this document that we just received, I have to say that the hole is not as deep as what you've just described.
Well, we can certainly discuss it further. When we get to that part, I think, believe that's in the superintendent of schools' report for that part of it. And the other thing is we go back, every year, we go to whether or not you budget based off of a trend line or based off of the people that you have.
Or zero-based budgeting approach. All right. So I agree, the budget needs to be operational solely. I would support that completely. But I'm having a difficult time explaining to a lot of residents what the hole is. So therefore, that's why I'm taking objection to this statement in the directions that are given to us. I don't think we're in a hole.
Okay. And we will certainly have other opportunities to discuss that. With your agreement, we'll continue to discuss the dates on which we will be talking about the budget.
Yeah.
After, excuse me...
Thank you.
Okay. After our workshop of the 30th and the 31st, we then have dates set forth, every Wednesday in February, the 7th, 14th, 21st. These are our meetings, those are the meetings starting on Wednesday, February 7th, for us as a board to discuss and dissect the budget and see what we want to do with it. The way that it works is Dr. Collin does his budget, the board then takes it and does whatever we want to it. We can add, subtract, leave the same, change the priorities of the budget in any way we choose and vote in a majority to do so. So those are the meetings where we're reviewing the budget. The 21st is down as a possible adoption of the budget and then transmittal over to the town council. And as we know from previous years, that date can get extended out if need be. And then at some point, we will be presenting to the town council our budget in May, in March. They then make their own decision whether or not they agree with us and what percentage they want to see us at. And then we make any necessary cuts we need to after that. Are there any questions on the dates set forth here? Mr. Sylvia?
I'm anticipating an additional meeting being required between February 7th and February 14th. And if possible, I mean, we could cancel it if it's not needed, but otherwise, we'd be asking for special meetings, would we not? If we need additional meetings between that period of February 7th and February 14th?
We may be, yes. But we would also likely just extend out to the February 28th meeting. We could have a February 28th meeting. We could also probably, and I don't remember the exact date, it has to be transmitted to the town council, but March 2nd is the actual date it has to be transmitted. So if we needed a February 28th meeting, we could do that as well. And we've done that in years past.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions on the meeting dates? Can I have someone read the recommended motion, please? Mrs. Guyan?
Move the Board of Education officially establish dates to review the superintendent's estimates for the 2018-2019 school budget to include January 24th, 2018, January 30th, 2018, January 31st, 2018, February 7th, 2018, February 14th, 2018, and February 21st, 2018, as outlined in the memo from the superintendent of schools.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Vasella. I realize now that we should have done that at the beginning before we discussed it, but any further discussion on the motion as made? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We will now move on to item five of new business, the Title IV Grant Application. I will this time ask for the motion to be read first, so we are appropriately discussing afterwards. Can someone read that motion? Dr. Braverman, and please put your mic on. Thank you.
Good idea. Move the Board of Education approved Title IV Part A Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant is submitted to the Connecticut State Department of Education.
A second on the motion? Seconded by Mr. Branda, he just beat Mrs. Strohs. And I will turn this over to Mrs. Maraca to discuss the grant.
Thank you, Mr. Schulman. And I apologize for the fact that I'm bringing information and requesting action on it in the same evening. However, the state released a Title IV Part A grant just prior to Thanksgiving break, and it was due electronically into the State Department on November 22nd, which meant there was no board meeting at that time prior to November 22nd to have you approve the action. We've not seen a Title IV funded grant in probably the last five years. And for, because the state has received some federal funding, they have reprocessed Title IV Part A allocations, which emphasize looking actually a year in arrears at schools in the year 2016-17 who received Title I funds, looking at the greatest need across those schools, and then developing a plan for supporting those students. So there were some qualifiers in it. The grant that I wrote for Newington Public Schools focused on two of the three, and you really only needed to focus on one of the areas, which was provide all students with access to a well-rounded education as defined by ESAS Section 810152. And then improve the use of technology in order to improve the academic achievement and digital literacy of all students. When it said improve conditions, I did not believe that we were in, based on the definition that Newington needed to work toward improving conditions. So a grant was submitted called STEM R, which is a summer program for elementary students in the areas of STEM technology and reading. And we would maximize the use of our Smart Bus so that we could have a mobile lab and use some online reading materials for students to maintain their reading over the summer and sort of eliminate some of that summer slide. I have heard that they have accepted it, and now it's under review. The maximum that I was eligible to apply for and did apply for was $10,000.
Any questions for Mrs. Maraca? Mr. Sylvia?
Ms. Maraca, please forgive me. So we have applied for the grant.
We have, except they can't continue the process until I can say to them that it was approved by our Board of Education this evening.
So that begs me to ask, we're obviously a roadblock by this formality. I would say, you have my permission to go after every last grant in the world. So, you know, to say that, yes, personally, I say yes, but...
I have to show evidence that it's in a Board of Education meeting minutes.
Yeah.
So the state has to know that I didn't just write this and not inform you of it.
And that is...
Tell me this is not a law?
No, it's just a formality for non-competitive grants.
It's a protocol.
It's a protocol.
Okay, I'm not good at protocols. All right. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no issue with this motion, but I would like to, you know, have a future motion to say, hey, guys, you can have all the permission you want to go after every last grant you want, and use this meeting as permission to do everything in the future.
Unfortunately...
Unfortunately, that will not... Unfortunately, that will not work.
Unfortunately, I don't think other people's protocols will enjoy that. So whenever necessary, they will bring to our attention and we can take appropriate action.
Thank you, alright. So if you smell a grant, just say, "I got a grant coming up, permission please." You know, it's just, this is ridiculous that we have to act... I'm sorry, I'm pontificating.
That's okay, Mr. Sylvia. Dr. Braverman?
Will this be free for the students?
It would be, that is what, the $10,000 will be used for paying staff and providing a driver for the Smart Bus, et cetera, and materials.
How many students do you expect will be able to participate?
Again, because it will be open, we would take sort of like participation reservations. And because we're using the Smart Bus, we can have it in different locations, different days of the week.
Do you have a ballpark of what you would like to see for participation?
Well, I would like to see about 25 students a day over the course of the month of July.
And those could be different students?
Yes, elementary level.
Weekends also?
What?
Weekends, so 30 times 25?
No, no, Monday through Friday.
20 times 25, so 500 students?
Well, they would be repeated, they'd be duplicated, so it wouldn't be 25 different students.
500 visits?
Could be.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mrs. Maraca, Mr. Brandon?
How would this impact what we discussed in curriculum with the summer support program?
The summer support program would be by invitation because we would be looking at student performance and growth data. So we would be looking at those students who are struggling, and this would be open to just any student who would be interested in coming onboard and learning to continue their reading and some technology coding.
And that will make more sense when we go through the plans, proposals, presentation later this evening? That's what Mr. Brandon just jumped into, ahead of the agenda.
I'm not proficient yet in Robert's rules.
None of us are. Is there any further question or comment on the grant before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to number six of our agenda. It is an action item, Budget Transfers. If we could have the motion read. Mr. Vasella?
Move the Board of Education approve the reallocation of funds from one program line item to another as proposed by the Superintendent of Schools.
In a second? Seconded by Mrs. Dros. I will turn this over for discussion to either Dr. Collins or Mr. Jacob Moles, whoever wants to take the first go. Mr. Jacob Moles?
Good evening, everyone. The mid-year budget transfer expressly is in the area of salaries at this time. This reflects all of the personnel changes, degree advancement, postponement of retirement, jumping onto the retirement system, plus numerous changes in the hourly staff just because of typical turnover and attrition. The major items you see on this, the other salaries account, is a $175,000 reduction. That is the allotments that were set aside for retirement increments and degree changes that are distributed out to all of the programs. So it goes from its holding location to its final destination as part of this transfer. In addition, there is a $99,310 increase in special ed. And that was to address the need to hire an additional behavioral specialist for the district because of the significant number of children with autism. The other changes and discrepancies, adjustments that are here, are, I would essentially characterize as routine based on, you know, the general ebb and flow of personnel activity during the year. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Sylvia? Yes?
Thank you. Alright, so the $99,000 that was added to special education is associated with a behavioral specialist?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. So why did we take out $2,454 from Language Arts?
Without knowing the exact, I'd have to go back and review person by person the changes that were there. Individuals who were expected to move up to a certain level did not go to that level. It's also a product of expenses to date where we have individuals that are on leaves of absence. They have to be recognized as far as the replacement cost against the budgeted cost.
So if I understand correctly, on that particular budgeted account, it's anticipated that we will not need to spend $2,454 on that account?
Yes.
And where are we planning on taking that money and applying it?
Well, this is a net zero transfer between all of the salary accounts at this point.
Right, so in my mind, I've got $2,500 that I don't need to spend on Language Arts, correct?
Correct.
Which I may need to spend it on special ed in another few months? Or can I just put it in reserves and have it sitting over at the side instead of reallocating it at this time? I mean, I'm recognizing we don't need to spend it, and I agree, fine. But I'm sitting here saying, we've gone through the effort of reallocating it to somebody else instead of saying, "Oh, I've got it in reserves, I got it in my back pocket in case something else crops up."
No, that's not a correct interpretation. If you look at the very first program of our, I believe it's an increase of $5,540, there is factual need that supports that. So to take the credit, put it into a reserve account, and ignore the obligation you have to the staff member or members in the art department that have earned and are entitled to a salary improvement, you know, can't be done. I have to take the good with the bad in here, or the pluses against the minuses.
Alright, so you're saying that $2,454 was applied to other salaries?
It was applied across the whole transfer. You know, this is a net sum of probably 75 transactions in the personnel area, some of which are increases, some are decreases. This is where it lands based on the allocation of their expenses for their salaries.
While Mr. Sylvia stewes over that, we will go to Mrs. Dros and come back to you after.
Alright, I just have a question, and I have no idea if this is the appropriate time to ask it.
Go for it.
So is it in the contract that if a teacher gets their master's degree or whatever, that they get their salary increase during that current school year?
Yes.
Is that, okay, thank you.
Mr. Freezy, can you... Thank you.
The contract is very, it is in the contract, it's very specific as long as that staff member submits all the appropriate documentation and information by September 15th of this current school year.
And is it also accurate that you've had to pre-approve the program of study that they are...
Correct, prior to their entry into the program and their completion, yes.
So am I understanding that the need, and I'm just learning, so please forgive me, the need for these salary changes because they're deserved is we kind of knew about this as of September 15th and we just make the adjustment now? I'm just learning.
This allocation is prepared at this time, the prior year. So right now, we have a forecast list of people who we expect to advance as of September 15th. But we don't know they've actually completed the program, no transcripts have been forwarded to us. But we have to set aside that money with the expectation that they're going to follow through and finish. So, but we don't move that money out of the salary, the other salaries account until this time in any year. So all of those degree changes that were, you know, proposed as of last December now are coming to fruition where we have to transfer money to the appropriate programs.
So there'd be no, there's no more, there wouldn't be any more for the remainder of the year because they weren't submitted?
Correct.
Thank you.
That part's already done. And what this also takes into account, when we have the budget, we are estimating what we are going to hire people at. And so this could very well be that we got somebody $2,500 cheaper than we had anticipated. I mean, so all of those things get taken into effect in this budget change.
For Language Arts, but maybe we hired a replacement science teacher at $10,000 higher, which we probably did because they're higher and higher every year.
The budget adjustment, the second one you will do later on in the year will more accurately reflect the reality of what happens throughout the year. But this reflects is the fallout of everything that happened from the time the budget was approved throughout the summer, the hiring process and all of that up until now.
And so the process is we get our budget in April all set. We have estimates for things like teachers that we're hiring, degree changes, and retirement increments because our teachers are allowed for three years of retirement increment pursuant to their contract. It's been, it's an allotment of money when they indicate they're retiring in X number of years. It's something that's been in our contract for a long time. So that money is housed, the second two things are housed in the other salaries account, which we'll go over more in the budget year. We revise it mid-year, and then we revise it at the end of the year. And those are the times that we make our budget transfers and make sure we have the appropriate amounts and the appropriate accounts. And back to Mr. Sylvia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Lou, I'm presuming then we took out the 13, based upon our hearing, we took out the $13,351 out of mathematics because all the teachers have got all their raises that we've hired. And we don't need that $13,000 in mathematics any longer because of salaries adjustments. Everybody's gotten what they deserve. And so what you're saying right now, in three months from now, I go and hire another teacher?
For Dr. Collins?
Am I transferring more funds into this account to make up the difference? Or are we settled and we're at a good spot with...
So tomorrow, a math teacher could go out on medical leave, and you could replace that person with someone else. And so therefore, you, that may all change by the next budget transfer.
Right, so I'm asking, why are we taking the money out of the account? Just let it sit there because of those what-if situations? What else are we trying to balance?
Well, this is what we know as of right now. So what you're trying to balance is all of the unknowns that we took care of from last April until now. So you're, so this is our estimate of where the accounts need to be as of this moment. So as we go through the year, we will then learn the what-ifs and all that other stuff. And then we'll ask you again to take care of those in May.
So the budget we put together for reading as of today was not appropriately estimated? We're $73,000, $74,000 off, and we needed to add $74,000?
It was appropriately estimated at the time, in April.
So I guess the better question is, what caused the $74,000 addition?
So what caused the $74,000 increase to reading? Yeah, I was leading to that.
And Lou, if you can just put your, we should just keep yours on the whole.
In this particular case, there was an expansion of one of the part-time reading teachers to cover additional work. I can't remember which school it is right now, but there was an expansion there, which was about $25,000 of it. We had a retirement increment issue that came in late, which added about $15,000, $18,000 to that number. And some of the hourly support money had to be increased. And I believe three people also qualified for an improvement on the degree scale, which probably was about $12,000 or $14,000, so.
So it's not that it was inappropriate necessarily. So if you just take, if you say in World Language, one teacher got a degree change and increased their salary by $5,000, we would have, they would have already been projecting that $5,000 change, holding it in the other salaries account, which is why we have that money in the other salaries account because we're counting on these 50 teachers to have their $3,000 or $5,000 changes to salary. Then when it happens, the money gets moved into the World Language account. I don't know that this is what happened in that account, but it possibly did. Then that $5,000 goes in there, so it looks like we are $5,000 under-budgeted when in fact we budgeted appropriately, and now we had a change. So we take from our appropriately budgeted other salaries, put it into the World Language account, and now it's appropriate again.
And I do see the reduction of the $175,000 in the salaries.
That's all of the degree changes and retirement increments.
But all of our negatives, debits, total $284,000. So I'm sitting here asking myself, shouldn't they, that difference between other salaries? Because we're all talking salaries.
And if you add the $175 and the 99 for special ed, you get two, close to 265. So some of these decreases may have been...
So that explains, now we're explaining where the math...
We need to take from our programs or where we have debits. We've got to hire, we have the need for the new special ed person. We didn't know, we need another behavioral specialist. We've got to do something, how do we balance it?
That just put the pieces together, Josh, thanks. I mean, because the 99 now is very close to the delta, the 284 and the 175. And, got it.
Okay, very good, I'm glad we could talk that out. Are there any further questions or any other comments you'd like to make, Mr. Jacob Moles? Any further questions for Lou or Dr. Collins on the transfers mid-year? Or procedurally, Mr. Brandon, Miss Dros, and the rest of us, because this is very confusing every year, what this means in terms of the budget? Okay, and I will ask one clarifying question, which always confuses me. When we actually get our budget books and we're reviewing our current requests to, for the 18-19 year, and we're comparing it to 17-18, the numbers we're comparing it to 17-18 are the revised budget numbers.
Correct.
So this middle column on the sheet that we all have that says revised budget after we make these budget transfers, when we see our budget books, they're going to compare to our currently, our revised budget and not the current budget, which is what we adopted back in April. So you'll see that all of a sudden, other salaries will seem like we have a huge need for an increase, but it's because we've already taken care of revising our budget mid-year. And so that's always, and this will come up and we'll discuss it again when we actually go through the budget, but it's always one of the more confusing aspects because we've already made changes, so it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you, Josh. What I don't see in the bottom-line totals is where the $1.8 million is. It's 1.73%.
That is a very good question, Mr. Jacob Moles, and I meant to ask that as well. Can you explain, so the $1.2 million, the hole that we've called it, that we're funding out of our non-lapsing account, where does that fit in?
Correct, that's $1.2 million, it's not $1.8. The non-lapsing fund is a separate fund sitting on the town's balance sheet. At a point in the year, and I don't remember exactly when we did it, we processed the journal entry transfer with the town that said, here, take $1.2 million of our expenses, offset it against the money that is sitting in the non-lapsing fund. And that account is now at $0 or $10 or some nominal amount at this point. Within our operating budget, we would be relieved of expenses. So our actual expenses for the year are lower than what they should be by $1.2 million. This particular document is just budget to budget as far as transferring the money. This does not speak to any variances that are either known at this time or anticipated. That will be part of the financial analysis. And as we, you know, work through the budget process in a few weeks as far as what are the trend lines now, where are the deficits that we're experiencing, and how we would go about addressing that on a budgetary basis. With the money being pulled out of our budget and sent to another location of the town, it basically brings our budget back into balance. Because those dollars, instead of being in a negative position on our books with a million, two of financial resources elsewhere, we've taken that expense over expenditure, moved it off our books to a different location. So we're now back being close to par at this point.
So if we use 71 million, whatever it happens to be, then you're right, there is no hole.
Right.
If we use that, if we use that number as our starting point, then there is no, there is no budget hole. If we use the 70 million, 389, then we've got a problem.
So is it accurate to say that the, my last recollection is that that $1.2 million, when we were thinking about our budget, including that, that money was spread out over the five core areas?
Yes.
So if this, if this sheet were to show the $1.2 million, it would be an equal amount in each of math and reading and...
It would be close to that.
Somewhere, somewhere close to that. Does that answer your question, Mr. Sylvia? So what this is showing is, so in math, it says $4.137 million. What the reality is, is that it's that plus 1/5 of the approximately $1.2 million.
Right, and so what I would like to, at least, if I could ask...
If we could have one that showed what it looks like with the $1.2 million?
Shows how, where we put the $1.2 million. Alright, so that we can easily, over a beer, sit and explain to other individuals that this is where that money went.
That would be very helpful, if we could have a side-by-side that shows what our actual budget is from the town and then with the $1.2 million, where that money falls in and what the actual numbers are.
It's good, because this is the first time this has ever been done, this is going to be...
No real protocol.
Not at all, and this is going to be extremely confusing because our operating budget technically is what you see right here.
Right, so one good place to start would be to have this sheet including the $1.2. If you guys could put it together and send it out to us.
Figure out how to disclose that properly, where it's...
Right, I just want to make sure it's disclosed properly so people, it doesn't mislead anybody. It would actually help us because then we're not starting out at a deficit at all, we're starting off even...
But as Josh explained, if the, for mathematics, if, you know, our budget that was approved is the... But as Josh explained, if the, for mathematics, if, you know, our budget that was approved is the four point one, five-one million, and we added in one-fifth, two-hundred-and-something thousand dollars, it's really, the budget for mathematics was.
Closer to four point four million dollars? Should have been what we were expecting it to be, based on what our need was.
Well, that, that's what we were expecting.
Exactly.
Of which, you know, the two-hundred-and-something thousand is the hole.
So what would be helpful would be a page two of this document, one showing approve, you know, our actual budget as given by the town council and our budget with the one point two million dollars.
Right. The important thing to remember is that money is not there next year. So that's, that's going to be the key.
But it helps explain the hole.
It helps explain the hole. So, and, and that, that certainly won't be hard for Mr. Jackamotz to put together.
I can then, I, I can then sit and talk with people to explain in a tangible manner.
What the difference is.
Okay. And where we're at. I mean, and come on back down to the bottom line, say, one point two million dollars was supplemented from a savings account that we've accrued over the last two years, and we applied to this particular year. We won't have that one point two million dollars available to us, and therefore, that's why it's going from seventy point three to.
Seventy-one point five-six. Yep, exactly. Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sylvia. That was very helpful.
Sorry if I let you work there a little bit.
Is there any other question on the budget transfers mid-year? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for that very nice discussion. We are moving on to action item seven. It is a meeting cancellation. If I can have someone read the motion, Mrs. Guyan?
Move the Board of Education cancel the regular meeting scheduled for Wednesday, January tenth, two thousand and eighteen.
And a second?
Second.
By Mr. Branda. Discussion, so currently, there's no business scheduled for that January tenth meeting. I believe one of the reasons why we are canceling is the additional meeting, the additional meetings for our workshop for the budget. The budget's being presented on the twenty-fourth, rather than the tenth. I don't know if there was another reason.
Yeah, typically, I, typically, I present the first week of January, but the number that I have to give you in health benefits is always a percent higher, because we don't get our number from the agent of record, Dan Kloski, until February first. So what I tried, I'm trying to do is I'm trying to push it as late as possible, so I can, I can reduce that number, I can get a lower number right from the start. Because the people, the number people remember is the number that I have to give out in the beginning of January, which I know is, is usually a percent higher. So I'm trying to give, I'm trying to give a lower number on the health benefits. So the closer I get to February first, the better off we are.
Beneficial to everyone, and for everyone's recollection, for the last couple of years, when, when Dr. Collins presents that first week, we then have our budget workshops, and then that, what, what is our twenty, January twenty-fourth meeting is actually this year, our February seventh meeting. So it's kind of just pushing back the timeline for budget season. We actually also will be doing regular business on that twenty-fourth meeting, as we discussed with Mrs. Maraca, those textbooks. Mr. Sylvia coming?
Thank you, yeah. Mr. Chairman, if I could ask, I stepped in this last year, because I thought the health benefit number of twelve million was twelve million, which Lou corrected my understanding to say it included all their benefits. If we could have an itemization of all of our estimates, so that includes, this is the nine point six million that's health benefits, this is the one point whatever for medical or.
Absolutely, and I think Dr. Collins usually does his best to make sure it is, and he certainly will be doing that this year.
I mean, so we have, we understand all the components of that particular line. Thank you.
Absolutely. And, and also, on that January tenth meeting, not having a full board meeting allows the curriculum committee to have an extended meeting regarding social workers, guidance counselors, and psychologists at the middle level, which will be incredibly beneficial for the board and the school district. Any further comments on the cancellation of the January tenth regular meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Mr. Sylvia is opposed.
Yes.
Okay. But you are invited to the curriculum meeting in case you missed us on that date.
I'll make it a plan to join.
And that, that motion passes eight to one. We can now move on to a report on the plans proposals, number eight. And I will turn that over to Mrs. Maraca, who already gave this presentation once this evening to the curriculum committee.
I will try to be more concise, for the sake of time. In your white folder this evening, you will find a plans report. It is colored, so you might want to just have that handy as I speak to the proposals that have been shared.
Can you also, as this is the first year for two board members, and I know they were there, but for the public as well, explain what the proposals are, what they mean procedurally for our budget?
I must compliment the curriculum committee for their work this evening, because they were spot-on with questions, with comments. And so they did a phenomenal job. You would never know that we had new members among us. So for board members, just a friendly reminder that plans council is the process that we use. It used to be P E B S for proposing, I did that specially for you, Mr. Sherman, for moving forward, new programs, new courses, et cetera. The plans council consists of administrators, teachers, parents, and they are shared presentations on each of the proposals that have been generated by anyone on staff, including our student members. This year, there were eight plans proposals submitted, which is a small number in comparison to previous years. We've had twenty-nine proposals submitted in the past. So I think that the economy has set its tone on what people are thinking about requesting and moving forward. But of the eight proposals, I am happy to say that most of them align very well with your just-evening adopted board priorities. So I think we're philosophically in alignment in terms of what the requests are, and then what we would like to see for the future for Newington Public Schools. So the first request was a world language request, which this Board of Education has heard repeatedly, which is the request to expand and enhance our world language program by adding four world language teachers, well, actually, Spanish world language teachers to the middle level, so that seventh grade would have Spanish as a core course, just like language arts, mathematics, social studies, and science. And Mrs. Guyan reminded me this evening that this is not a, well, can we get one or can we get two? It is really a full package. We either hire the four, or we don't move the proposal forward. And so, again, it's, it aligns with your board priority. The second plans proposal, general education preschool class, again, is a board priority to increase access to early childhood education. This is a resubmitted, yet revised proposal, and the revision is that in the past, the preschool proposal looked at a half-day preschool program. This proposal looks at a full-day preschool program with the option of a half-day for parents who feel that their four-year-old may not yet be ready for a full-day session, or they want their child home with them for part of that day during the weekend. So we're offering either one of those. And the request for universal preschool is really something that was, again, prompted by the shift in the state, which is saying that we need to have universal preschool, and the state needs to have a plan in place and ready to act on by two thousand and twenty-two. In order for this proposal to come to fruition to its full capacity, outside of the three current special ed preschool classrooms, we would need to add fifteen preschool classrooms for four-year-olds. Knowing that that is not reasonable, a request for next year, for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, we are requesting the expansion of two classrooms, which would require two teachers and two tutors. And we believe at this point, looking at elementary school enrollment, that we could provide a space for those two classrooms within our elementary schools. So that, and then the goal would be that each year thereafter, we would add two more additional preschool classes until we reach that total of fifteen additional or eighteen preschool classes in total.
We don't have the guidelines yet, right, from the state?
We have, there are preschool standards, early childhood education standards. We don't know what the state's plan for supporting that is yet.
Okay. But currently, we have the facilities to support this plan?
We have the space to support the plan. We would need to buy resources to make sure that tables, chairs, mats, et cetera, are available for four-year-olds, because right now, we only have three classes of three- and four-year-olds. And we would need to have staff, which would be teachers and tutors.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Guyan?
Would this be a program that parents would be asked to pay a portion of, like the other program in?
When we talk about a universal preschool program, it falls under the guidelines that it would be free for anyone.
So not, so, but these two classrooms, would they be free for anyone?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The sliding scale is on our typically developing, who we accept into our special education program, because our current three preschool programs are all designated as special ed, self-contained. At one time, we did try to have an inclusion classroom, and unfortunately, due to the number of preschoolers with special needs, we were unable to accept an appropriate number of typically developing students.
Really quick, we talked about the peer model program. If this new one was free, and the peer model currently isn't, would that deter parents who are maybe going to the peer model program to participate?
It may, but we would have to then talk about whether or not, and I haven't had this conversation with Mr. Jackamotz, whether we could at that point afford not to have the four, and I'd be clear about this, the four-year-old typically developing, because right now, we also have three-year-old typically developing not pay.
Yeah, the money we're getting is not.
Is so small. It pays like for snacks.
The other thing I might add to the conversation is that our number of special education students is up so high in our existing programs, that it's likely that in one of these new programs, we would have to mimic those programs that are at Reynolds and Patterson. So if we were only to open one, for example, next year, it would probably be the same program we have at Reynolds and Patterson. And then you would do it uniformly, either you're charging or you're not for the typically developing peers.
Mr. Sylvia?
Are all the districts experiencing this growth in special ed students?
Yes.
Is it the water? What's going on? Or, I mean, the state is losing population. Our towns are losing population. Our student enrollment is going down, or somewhat staying stable, but it's going down.
But the needs are increasing.
Right? And so I'm sitting here going, but the percentage is going up, so what's, there's something here. There's something driving this that I'm not cognizant of.
I think Mrs. Stam could probably speak to it most. The, the issue, part of it, in my belief, was when they, when the, they changed the guidelines for autistic children, the numbers started spiking across the state. Now, Mrs. Stam, you could probably speak to that more intelligently than I can.
Okay. So I'm coming back, who's they?
It's, it was the state.
The state. Lawmakers, not protocols, not regulators. It's lawmakers saying, here's the new guidelines.
But the state, probably in conjunction with the newest DSM that came out, I imagine, right? Mrs. Stam, if you'd like to say a few words on it?
It is, there's, there's, it's called the DSM, and it puts in the guidelines of what a qualifying, a qualification would be under any kind of special education designation.
If you could just explain what the DSM is, who develops it?
Yeah, I'm not ready to do all that, so.
But it's, it's a medical community document that provides guidelines for diagnosing. And so it kind of, you can track it over the years for what is diagnosable, what's not, and those are guidelines that are then used by professionals to diagnose students. Then those diagnoses go into the guidelines from the state that determine what percentage of your population qualifies for I E Ps or five oh four plans under the ADA.
And we're not getting funding for this?
We get certain funding for it. But not for our, not for students that are staying in Newington that we are just providing special education services for. We get, we get reimbursement, the excess cost grant is what we get from the state, which they don't always fund properly, which is supposed to be any amount that we spend on a student for special ed services that's four and a half times our average per pupil expenditure, is supposed to be reimbursed by the state.
Right, thank you for the explanation.
The other thing, if we have an explosion of just students who need I E Ps, and we need more special ed teachers or more tutors, we have more administrative time at P P T meetings, all of that kind of gets wrapped into our budget, which is why our special ed costs increase. Why, a couple of years ago, we started that self-contained classroom at Y Green, and, you know, tried to save some money, so we weren't out placing as many students, which we've had success with, but the needs keep increasing for one reason or the other.
Thank you.
The next proposal, I think aligns with your safe, supported, and healthy culture board priority, and that is a request, that is a revision of a former submitted proposal, which is for the request for one full-time social worker and one full-time school psychologist at the middle level. Right now, we have teams, multidisciplinary teams at the elementary and the high school level, which consist of school psychologists, social workers, general educators, teachers, nurses, O T P T at both elementary and high school. At the middle level, the missing component is a social worker. And I know the curriculum committee spoke this evening and talked about, well, it used to be for two social workers, now why the school psychologist? And as we're seeing a growth in the special ed population, so are school psychologists. Experience a higher demand on assessment, data reporting, because remember, there are annual reviews for all of our students. And as our population increases, so do the requirements for finding out more data and information and monitoring student growth and performance of our students with an I E P. So this request really is to help particularly with both of these positions, to help with the behavior side of S R B I, which in the real world is called R T I. And so, again, being able to develop behavior plans for students, monitor them, and implement them successfully, as well as support the general education teacher on how to adjust students' behaviors and what might be those antecedent behaviors that you can sort of identify, and then be able to know what to do with. So it really is, at the middle level, I always said, you know, when I taught junior, at then it was junior high, seventh and eighth graders, if there was one area where emotions went up and down on a regular daily basis, maybe sometimes hour by hour, Paul's laughing over there, it was definitely at that age level. So I really think that this would be an opportunity to complete that continuum of service from elementary through high school.
Mrs. Guyan?
Just to add to that, the, every time there's a P P T, there's a representative, there's a special ed teacher, as well as, I think, a psychologist.
An administrator, school psychologist, related service.
Right. At every single P P T, and you guys can speak to how many P P Ts there are a week, or a day, or whatever that is.
Five hundred and sixty-five special ed students.
And each of them has at least a minimum of one P P T. But preschoolers and elementary students, and some of our more at-risk students can have up to four P P Ts, and we have to have a P P T anytime a parent requests.
And those P P Ts last for how long? And I, I mean, in average, I know.
Hour, an hour, and some can last up to two.
So just thinking about that as time spent, that these people are spending, not even working with our students, just in those P P T meetings, is an exorbitant amount of time. So adding that onto their regular workload is a lot.
Mrs. Stam?
First of all, let me explain. P P T is a planning and placement team meeting. Every student who is a special education, education student has to have an individual plan. But when they review those plans, the meeting is called a P P T. So those are the meetings that you have, and most of the time, when you have a special education student, you're not just meeting once a year, you're meeting multiple times a year. There's rare cases when you're just meeting annually. But I was at, it's, I'm starting to really think about this, because I was at, when you proposed the curriculum, at the curriculum meeting. In my opinion, the need really is for two full-time social workers, a social worker at each middle school, and then the psychological split and shared at both schools. But that's my personal opinion.
That means a plus-one to this proposal.
So that means two, in my opinion, we need two social workers, one at each middle school, and then the additional psychologist, because psychologists are the people who do all the testing and evaluation. And just so people are aware, every special education student needs to be reevaluated every three years. So they're not only just evaluating brand-new student concerns that may come up, but they have a schedule of kids that they have to reevaluate every three years, so they can review it and make sure that those children are still eligible for the services. So that's my opinion, right?
I just want to add two quick points on. And I, I just want to add two quick points on to that. One is that the PPTs and evaluations, everything like that are federally required things based on statute. So that's why all of these things are happening. This is not just our plan, this is the federal requirement. Second is that this particular issue about social workers and school psychologists at the middle level is the, is the basis for the January tenth two-hour special curriculum committee meeting with some of our professionals that are in the middle schools, dealing with the issues, talking about what they're dealing with and what this type of proposal or other proposals would do to change what's happening in our middle schools. So I think that's, if we're going to have a fuller discussion about that, that's, that's the time. And then during budget, when we're deciding whether or not this is something we'd want to move forward in our actual budget.
All right. So I'm the data guy, right?
Yes.
I'm not questioning the conceptual need, but my first reaction is, is there a variable cost model to a PPT? Ie, is a particular school or are schools experiencing forty PPTs per day? Do we have the data that says how many-
We don't have enough hours in a day to host forty PPTs, unfortunately. Unfortunately.
So how many hours of PPTs are we having? I mean, do we have the data that can support this? I mean, we're talking with yours, this is six thousand hours.
We are going to be discussing that thoroughly.
Okay. If we got the data that can support six thousand hours of behavioral support, no argument. But what I'm sitting here, in my mind is, in the business, when we first identify a need, we come in with a variable cost model saying, okay, I have a need, I need to bring in a specialist, twenty a week, Mr. Branda, please come in, charge me your rate, blah, 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 blah. It will get to a point where Mr. Branda's hourly rate for those variables gets to a point that justifies-
Full-time.
A full-time, which is what we did with this AB, CA-
ABA.
The ABA individual, right? And that proved that we saved money because we were spending more on variable cost than we were if it became a fixed cost. And what I'm afraid of is I don't have enough data.
And that is why we are, that's the number one target for curriculum.
I'm going to enjoy sitting there and listening to that meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mrs. Stam.
So I think it would be wise to ask your staff to do that as, like, you can have, you know how many PPTs have been scheduled. That's clearly, it's all documented. But also, maybe the number of children who we are not able to give direct services to because we don't have the bodies, we, we know who those kids are, I know you know who those are. And, and your psychologists do see children on a regular basis for counseling services.
Per IEP requirements.
Right. So how many you got doing that? How many, I know you can hash it out, but I just want everyone to be clear that that data is available and they will be able to find it. It's going to take time, but that, that should be there at that meeting so that we know that we have children that we have to see, and they, I know they see them, but there's other, there's, we are not seeing a lot of the children who aren't on IEPs, and we need to do something with that. And in most districts, I have to tell you right now, that social workers, social work services, because of the amount of children who need it, are generally just given to the kids with IEPs. But we need to, that trend needs to change because our counselors cannot see all those children either. So that, you know, I'm, I know that you know what it needs to look like, but I want everyone to know that we can get that data.
But I want to get that data out in front of the community, right? And be able to say, this is why we're coming to you for three individuals on this particular-
Absolutely. And so the process will be plans, proposals made in the curriculum committee. Curriculum committee will look at all of that, and then when we're discussing it at budget time, if it's in Dr. Collins' budget or we want to add it in, if it's not, why are we adding it in? What's the backup data? All of that, just like we've done in, in previous years. So right now, we're setting the foundation for why this is a need, and it did start at the end of last year with one curriculum committee meeting already.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Any other questions on that topic? Are we ready to move on to the fourth out of seven, eight?
Ready.
Ready.
So the fourth, again, I feel like I'm here, you know, requesting a lot of staff, but I think what we have to do is recognize something. Mrs. Sylvia, you said earlier that our demographic population is changing. Who is coming to school nationally are bringing more needs with them? And so this is a request for a teacher of English language, ESOL teacher. We had, at the time of this proposal, two hundred and fifteen students. I'm sure you've all been reading the press and listening to the news, and we're having an influx in Connecticut of students who have come from areas devastated by hurricanes. We heard from Matt about the fundraising at the high school. And so again, those numbers of two hundred and fifteen English language learning students across our seven schools is, has increased, I want to say by six, because even though students coming in from Puerto Rico or the islands have some English, they don't have necessarily academic English inability to access learning in classrooms. We have four full-time EL teachers. An example I gave to the curriculum committee is, we have one of our EL teachers right now who is spread across three schools, begins the day at Newington High School, moves over to Martin Kellogg, and then goes over to Elizabeth Green. That's a very tough schedule and obviously cannot be at the high school to support students when they're outside of a class or two. We have been resourceful, we have purchased, Mrs. Glioso purchased Rosetta Stone for English because they are saying that English language learners would learn, at least be able to hear the language through Rosetta Stone. So we are using that at the high school to try to assist, but we're just having more students than we have staff to be able to provide, not necessarily that just pull out into a class, but actually pushing into a classroom to support a learner when they're in their classroom environment, because that's really important, that the student still be part of a class that's speaking English, but have enough support that can be given to him or her while they're there or then in their small pull-out group at an alternate time. So again, the need is increasing. I just received the names of two students today who have come into the district from Puerto Rico. So it's almost a daily update for us. Any questions on the need for an EL teacher? The fifth request, and it is no cost, is math realignment to offer a pre-algebra course for our math students who are struggling. With the requirement for four math credits, what we're seeing is that some of our students are being unsuccessful in algebra, or they struggle and it's taking them longer than a full year. So Mrs. LaJoy and the math department really looked at the problem and thought long and hard about what could we do? And one of the proposals was to look at a pre-algebra class, and we have not taught pre-algebra, we used to teach pre-algebra back in two thousand, two thousand and two, maybe, in middle school. I think Paul probably knew where I teach her at Wallace, we taught pre-algebra. And because of some of the shifts in where the standards went with the shift with some of the Connecticut Core Standards, components of pre-algebra were placed into the grade eight math curriculum. I can't say that at the depth and breadth that they were previously, and it's just insufficient for students who need a longer time to learn mathematics. So the pre-algebra course would be a course that would be offered at the high school. The sixth request is for a ceramics two course, again, no cost except for curriculum writing. Mrs. Fayera decided that this is a resubmission, that she would rotate when ceramics is offered, and she's also using a different type of clay so that the clay doesn't immediately harden when it's been out in the air, and she can rework it and reuse it. So ceramics two would help extend students, as with all of our art courses, being able to give them an advanced, a more advanced course in an area that they've just started. The seventh is what Mr. Branda spoke to earlier when we spoke about the Title IV Part A grant, and this is a reading support program for students entering grades one through five. It's a proposal to help eliminate or minimize what I call summer slide, when students aren't picking up books and reading. It would be supported by board funds for the teaching part of it, which would be for teachers, but then Title I funded for transportation and materials. So it would establish a seven-week during the summer, one and a half hour session offered twice each day for students entering those grade levels. And the goal would be to continue their growth in learning rather than letting it stop and possibly slip backwards where they ended the summer school, the summer, and keeping them going until they start the next school year.
Mr. Sylvia.
Have we, have we discussed this item seven with the library and working collaboratively with them?
We do work collaboratively with the library. We have encouraged all of our students to participate in the library's summer reading program. The difference is, that's independent reading, so picking up a book and reading it versus this is actually instructional reading. So some of the reading skills that students have a deficit in, we would help fill in.
So, okay, so my mind's going, we'll be doing these summer programs at the schools, not the library?
Correct. There is really not an instructional space, and because we have so much technology available, we would want it probably in maybe one school, put two teachers on the north side and two teachers on the south side, so it would be less time on transportation.
So when I come back to the collaborative angle, right? Is it an opportunity for us to open up our facilities to the library so that when their children that would attend their program could also come to our facilities and potentially participate in this program?
This program, the difference, as I was mentioning to Mr. Branda, would be by invitation because we would be looking at student data for performance. So it's really intended for students who are struggling with reading and have just made it, and we want to ensure that they don't lose any of their skills. So and if the public library is open to all students, advanced readers, this is really more for a struggling reader.
So it's invitation, it's voluntary?
Invitation and voluntary, but we do a lot to strongly encourage, and we've always had good turnout in the past.
So what, my mind is spinning around trying to join the library with our efforts instead of having our efforts competing with the library.
I think what the difference is there, the, the program we're having is an instructional program that's going to give students specific instruction and practice. The library program is an enrichment where you're reading independently on your own with, and you're not, you're not being instructed, you're not having, coming back to conversations or having discussions about what you read, or they're not testing your comprehension and things like that. So the program in the schools is actually working on comprehension, working on your reading, your decoding skills. The library program is more, if it's not, I don't know if it's changed or not, but when my, my children went, you know, your goal is to read five books this summer, and, and if you do that, you know, there's, they just, I don't know what they do, but I, those kinds of things. It's not the same, it's not instructional at the library.
In the hope it would be supplemental, that these students would certainly be doing additional reading, and I'm sure that they would be getting, you know, also do the library program at the same time.
In our Title I summer school that we have had previously, we did encourage the students, we used all of the materials from Lucy Robbins Wells and would remind them to go to the library to collect books. They do work with Mrs. Kraus in providing programs, which she could speak to.
Yeah, I was going to mention, our alignment with the library for their summer program is actually very tight. I work with them each year, and we've already started for this summer. And in fact, the program at the elementary level, we do in the area of math, the library's actually joining forces with us to do a combination of reading and math through their program this summer. So we actually work very collaboratively on that. There's no distinction between it. The summer programming information that we send out as a school district is the library's program, and she and I work together on the pieces, we need the pieces, they need, and we make one program out of it.
All right. Thank you. I just can't buy that the library just throws a book at me and goes, read it. You know, I, I've dealt with a lot of librarians and, you know, a lot have taught me how to read, so I view that as instructional. But then again, I'm not a teacher, so I don't know the true definition of instruction. But I'm encouraged, Wendy, what you're saying is that there is a collaboration that's occurring. It's not them and us. Thank you.
There's also collaboration at the young adult level, where the young adult librarians come over to the middle schools and the high schools as well and book talk with our students.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. Moving on to the last-
The final proposal is to increase the nurses' work year. Currently, our school nurses work one hundred and eighty-eight days, and annually, they make a request for two additional days, sometimes up to five, and I've never been able to agree to five. So the most I think I've given them is two. And so Mercy and I talked about it, and I said, you know what? I don't like you having to come to me and sort of plead your case for two additional days, so let's put a plans proposal forward and just increasing their salary so that they would work one hundred and ninety days rather than one hundred and eighty-eight. They have record reviews, elementary nurses have to review records, submit them to the middle level, middle level to the high school. As we have more medically fragile, nurses are taking in scripts from physicians and having to review those and know with some of our students with special needs, what actually is that diet plan. Parents come in and bring medications and orders. So it is really important that our teachers are well-informed by our school nurses and our school nurses know exactly who are our most healthy at-risk, our health-at-risk students. And that does take time in review of records. So this is a request for them to have two additional days to be able to review those records and make sure that they have it clear as to who they need to speak to and what the protocols need to be for students' health.
Don't have any tools to provide them? I mean, you're only asking, what, we've got nine nurses? So we're asking eighteen days, a hundred hours?
Roughly.
I'm doing the math in my head, sorry.
Right.
But there's no tool sets that can assist them to make up that hundred hours over the hundred and eighty-nine days?
They have, they have a software system that they use, but they're, they have to input the information for it to be within the system. They have to go back in and review the records.
There you go. So they have to input the data.
Correct.
Michael and I, as an example, we could help them input the data, or we could go hire somebody to help them input the data.
No, you can't.
No?
You have HIPAA, you have to-
You have HIPAA, you can't.
I have to have a medical certificate to input data?
Well, data about my child's health and everything like that, yeah. I mean-
I need a medical certificate to input data on your child. That I can't buy.
No, you need to be an employee-
I've got too many medical assistants and I got way too many kids that are in school that input medical data into systems. We're talking data entry here.
You need to be an employee of the school-
I can understand privacy.
You have, right, but you have to be an employee, and we don't have anyone other than our nurses that we would-
We have to be an employee to input data?
Under the guidelines for HIPAA, yes. Because you have to, it's confidential information.
Right. And we need to be a whole-
Correct. You can sign nondisclosure agreements with other individuals, Ms. Marocca. I mean, so, well, I'm, this is, I'm struggling, so please bear with me. It's data. It's data that any individual can input into a software system, they signed a nondisclosure agreement, and I'm trying to help the teachers, the nurses, so that they have more time to do their evaluation of the data and the reports.
They do all of that.
Right, right. I'm trying to find out how I can get them a hundred hours of support, or two hundred hours of support. It's a variable cost instead of having to go and extend their contract here. So where I'm trying to, I'm talking out loud, and I'm thinking out loud, but I'm just trying to get to a point of saying, it's data that needs to be input to a system so that they can evaluate it.
That's only part of what they're going to be doing. They actually do, do intake meetings with parents regarding children's health. So I mean, I, I could give you a list of all that they do, but the input of the data is a smaller piece than I think is being interpreted, but it is really all of the other pieces. Like they do necessarily on a five-year-old who has medication and a parent comes in with a script from a physician, that nurse needs to make sure she sits down and clearly lets the parent understand how it's going to be administered in school, what the requirements are going to be. That isn't something that someone else can do, that really is the school nurse.
I agree. There's definitely a parting of the water. This can only be done by Mr. Branda because of his skill sets. I'm trying to find the support mechanisms so he can do his skill, not shoveling and digging holes, right? Which is what I call data or other things. Do the important types of activities that nurses need to do and get them the support to do the non-nursing activities. That's where my head's at.
I understand.
It's not a bad idea.
No, not bad.
But then you have to do a cost-benefit analysis of, so let's say that we hired a secretary for the, for the nurses who would input that data. Well, how much would it cost you to hire the secretary as opposed to-
Rent a secretary.
Rent a secretary. I'm not sure the union would appreciate that or-
I rent secretaries at twenty dollars an hour.
Good for you.
Hundred hours, two thousand bucks.
I'm not sure that you have a union or not, but in our public school district, we have a union that would probably frown on that and grieve it.
have a union that would probably frown on that and grieve it.
Well, then that probably.
The nurses are unionized?
No, the secretaries. And it's ASME town, it's town-wide.
So there's a secretarial union, so if you're going to take and resource out secretarial tasks to an outside agency, that's grievable for them because we're not giving them the opportunity to have those hours or add someone to their union.
So I could ask one of our multiple-unionized assistants, I'm not going to call them secretaries, I think that's not the right thing. We could come to them and say, like we do with teachers, "I've got some extra work for you to do here, here's whatever the contracted rate is," and say, "Here's an ex-" you know, we give it to teachers saying, "Go teach that football team, here's another $5,000. Here's, you know, go do volleyball, here's another 5,000 bucks." So I mean, come to the union and say what their rate structure is and say, "And I need another 100 hours of support work."
That would be negotiating outside the contract. There's, and we don't negotiate that contract, the town does, so we, we are bound by, because that is consolidated, so we are bound by the, the town's ASME contract. So it's not something that we can on our own just go do.
We could talk to the town manager and that and just, I mean, it's, I'm trying to get away from excuses. I'm trying to find the nurses' help so they don't need two extra days and beg or plead.
I think we're focusing way too much on the data piece because this isn't really, this isn't really a cut-and-dry and data entry component to this problem. Nurses don't only have to meet with parents, they have to call parents that, that don't have the information they need, they have to go through the files, they have children coming in, they have to make calls to parents and say, "Our information isn't in, remind these moms and dads that some of their kids still need physicals." It's all private information, plus on occasion, many occasions, the nurses have to call the physicians themselves to get information and get protocols for, for how they're supposed to like deal with these children. It's not a cut-and-dry data entry issue. There's many, many components and, and I wouldn't agree that it would, we would resource that out to a secretarial pool or administrative assistant pool in that sense. It's, it's very different, it's not, it's not a cut-and-dry data entry, period.
I'm going to pull us back as a group. What I'm going to say is that this is a report from Mrs. Maraca. We've received the information. Mr. Sylvia, your comments have certainly been heard and I expect will be discussed later by the administration. If this is included in the budget proposal from Dr. Collins or if it isn't, all of these plans proposals will be in our budget books for us to view throughout the budget process. Anything that is in or out of the budget, we will have multiple opportunities to discuss further, any other ideas, whether or not we need to do it or not, or there's other things. Points are well taken and I think we appreciate it.
All right, I, thank you. I do appreciate it. I'm sorry I'm so verbose, but I have found trying to find the individuals the help they need would be much better than asking for another nurse or two more days of contractual. Thank you.
Point noted. Is there any further discussion?
Adjust at the financial.
The financial follows.
Financial is follows, under staff costs and benefits, those are salaries and benefits for certified staff, under, under other staff costs. When you see something like $1,600 or $1,300, that's curriculum writing and the $40,000 for the preschool would be the two tutors. It tells you how many full-time equivalents are being requested. Related materials would relate to textbooks, laptops or any other resources and then the total cost for each of the proposals. So for the finance committee members, with Dr. Collins mentioning the $800,000 in plans proposals, you had not yet seen that, that was what you were seeing this evening in this document.
Thank you, Mrs. Maraca, and I will say, this is good for everyone to take a look through these, familiarize yourselves with these proposals. None, some, or all of them will be in Dr. Collins's presentation on January 24th to us. Regardless of what's in there, they will be in our budget binders for us to take a look at and refer to throughout the process and we'll be able to add or remove anything as we see fit and have any questions we have answered. Are there any other questions or comments at this time on those plans proposals? Seeing none, we're going to move on to our last agenda item, which was added earlier in this meeting. It's an action item for the administrative salary ranges. I'll have someone read the motion first. And this was what was in our white folders at the beginning of the meeting. Mrs. Gaiman?
Move the Board of Education to adjust the administrative salary ranges for 2018, 2019, 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021 by .62% per year for a total of 1.86% over three years.
And seconded by Mr. Vassella. Open it for discussion and I'll open just by saying that this was something we had discussed in our executive finance joint meeting on Monday and that we had asked Mr. Farisi to go back and get some additional data in preparation for tonight's meeting to talk about this. He did that. Dr. Collins, if you want to make some opening comments and then turn it over.
So typically, and it's important to note that what you have before you tonight are not increases. They're not, we're not talking about increases to administrative salaries. What typically happens is after the Newington Teachers Association settle their contract, since the Newington administrators are one of the very few, if not one of the only group in the state without an administrative union, the administrators typically follow the teacher contract. And so those, those ranges are then decided after the contract with the teachers is settled. So it runs parallel to the teacher contract. Now, this particular go-around, there was not, it went to arbitration. And so therefore, it was not settled locally, it was, it was settled through an arbiter, arbiters. So the, the, what you see under Newington Teachers Association, that was the arbitration agreement or award. And it's typically about a 1.4% salary and then 2.49 salary and increment for the three years. The ASME contract, which is negotiated by the town, town manager, was two and a half percent increase over 18, 19, 19, 20, and then, and then it's negotiated again. We don't know about the Newington Town administrators and then the administrative unions throughout the state. The numbers have been coming in at about 2.19%, 2.21% and 2.21% over the next three years. And those are actual salary increases. So we are not recommending those. What we typically do in Newington is we set a range and, and people have to fall within that range. Typically, a new administrator will start at the bottom of the range and then they will, they will move up, but it's not guaranteed. So what you have before you here tonight is not a guaranteed .62% increase to a salary. What we're asking for is a .62% increase to the ranges so that we are kind of in the middle of the road with regard to our advertised salary. So if we have an opening for an administrator, the number that we publish in the paper is, that's what we're asking you to do tonight is to improve those ranges.
So there's two different things that we do. Again, so the first part is we have an advertised range when we have an opening. So the past couple of years, this past year, we had an advertised opening for a high school assistant principal. We have an established salary range for what that is. This motion right here changes the salary ranges and, and Mr. Farisi will, will go after me and discuss why it's going up by .62%. The second part of this is how do our administrators receive raises? And as we all remember over the last few years, the budget table, we determined that during our own budget process around the board because the administrators don't have a union that requires their contract. Typically, it's similar to what our, our teachers are receiving. In some years, it has not been. So if we go back two years, it was a freeze for administrative salaries, then the year after that, last year, was also a freeze. This is the first year in three years we gave our administrators a rage, a raise which was below what our teachers got, I believe it was somewhere around 2%, for our administrators' raise. So even though those were their raises, these, the, the range of salaries had changed at a different time. And so there are times when someone, once we change the range of salary, will get a salary bump to, to still hit that minimum. And so that is, I think there's one situation that that will happen with an administrator and I'll turn it over for Mr. Farisi to explain why it's .62 and to kind of go through that.
Certainly. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to explain that. So we do look at some of the surrounding districts or districts that have some similar either demographics or same-size high schools and such. So if you go to the very last page that's in your packet, you should see, I believe it's folded, but it's a chart that looks like this. And you'll see, right now in the current 2017, 2018 school year, you'll see Newington falling in line, or not falling in line, but compared to Berlin, Glastonbury, Rocky Hill, West Hartford and Weathersfield. So we kind of take the salary ranges from those districts and look at where, how do we compare? And when we go to your ninth bullet on your Board of Education priorities to attract and retain professional talent, we, we need to look at, what are we advertising and how are we advertising and are we able to attract that talent and then hopefully retain it based on our salary range competitiveness throughout the, the state and some surrounding areas? So when you look at this scale, you'll see we fall right about in the middle of the pack in the 2017, 18 school year for almost every position that's out there that we have at the administrative level. And then we forecast downward to see how, how would we continue to be able to be competitive within the, the ranges among this group? And so you'll see that we remain competitive around the middle of the pack as we continue to go down. A few things that are of note is that Berlin and Weathersfield are in contract negotiations, so they don't have that data moving forward. But if you take their 2017, 18 and somewhat predict it out, you'll, you'll see that we would probably still be right about in the middle of the pack with the .62% increase over the time. We look at increasing both the bottom and the top so that way we can stay in a competitive range. What that does is if there are folks who are just hired in at the bottom, it would increase their salary by .62. However, this is not an increase of salary for anyone else. That's a whole different, you know, time period and discussion. So this has nothing to do with increasing individual administrator salaries. This has to do with increasing the competitive range so that way we can attract and retain candidates.
Absolutely. And I, Mr. Farisi, I want to thank you for this last page. When we met on Monday, you were requesting a different number and we asked for additional information, you did the research, you got us the numbers and .62 is, is not a large change to our range and it will keep us kind of in that pack, which is a good thing. We want to make sure that we're remaining competitive, which is the purpose for this motion. It's, it's much lower, .62, than, than what we've done in the past, which, which is good, which means that we are very competitive in what we're offering for new administrators. Mr. Branda?
Thank you. Quick question. Are the districts that are on this comparison sheet, are they unionized with their administration?
So they are. Every, every district down here is. We're hard-pressed to find one that isn't.
Right, okay.
So it would be our expectation that Berlin and Weathersfield that are currently in negotiation, the ranges that we see for 17 will likely be going up by somewhere around 2% probably.
Right, because of what we're seeing with other settlements in the state.
And so by the end of the three years, it's your expectation will be fairly similar to, to those districts? I'm going to go to Mrs. Strohs. Mr. Sylvia, you got to go the last.
I just, I'm not saying I'm opposed, I'm not saying I'm for it. I just, I missed the meeting on Monday. I just have, being that we're not unionized in this town, I guess my questions are, you know, these are, we can show salary and this is kind of where I get concerned and why I kind of brought myself to this table is, like, how much are these towns paying, how much are these administrators paying for their health insurance as compared to Newington? Looking at comparative data, although important, you know, to say that we're the same size as West Hartford, I don't know if that's really a true statement, definitely not Glastonbury High. So I just, I, again, I know that we have to vote on it, I just don't have enough info. I guess I saw a lot of questions. I don't have a lot of information here. So maybe you can address that?
These are, these are, these are salary ranges. The rest of it, as far as the benefits go, fall in line with the, everything else falls in line with the teacher contract. So the administrators get the, the teacher benefits. So that's how all that works. So what you are just worrying about tonight is you have to have a published range and right now we have one. But let's say July 1st, we go to, we need an assistant principal somewhere. We don't have any ranges. So, so after the NDA contract is settled, that's where we, we come to the board every three years and we say, "Okay, we need to, we need to adjust the ranges for what we're hiring people for."
Mr. Farisi, did you have a comment respective to that question?
So I did, just in regard to some of the, the towns. We try to take a, a good sampling as well in, in realizing that, you know, people usually draw a, a circle around the area they're willing to travel to go to work. And, and we want to kind of understand what are towns within that, you know, I don't know, 20-mile radius or 25-mile radius that other people might have an opportunity to go and be employed. And we want to ensure that we're competitive within that radius so that way we are attracting and retaining the best. So that's kind of where this comes from, many bordering towns and then a few others that might be within that radius as well.
Mr. Sylvia, thank you for your patience.
If I understand correctly, Weathersfield and Rocky Hill are unionized?
Correct.
So they'll be racing to come join us?
Oh, no.
Because of the range that they're at right now is lower than our range?
Their range is guaranteed because it's a contract agreement. Our range, we took zeros, are never guaranteed. So we're always, we're more at will, their contract.
So there are examples where some folks might start on the beginning of the range and, and may only move slightly like by, you know, .62 if that, but if we freeze for a couple of years, they don't move at all. Where the others are guaranteed, on average, this 2.19%, 2.21% and 2.21%.
Correct. So what's interesting is if you look at the chart a little closer, and I'm obviously just seeing this tonight as well, our starting range is higher relative to where we end than most of these districts, which when you think about it, when you don't have union protections, when you've had two zeros in a row, in order to come to a district without those guarantees and you're an at-will employee, it's just interesting that our floor starts higher than other districts' floor, but our ceiling in, in most cases is either at or below their ceiling.
Right.
Which is just an interesting thing to, to realize about how our administrative group kind of works to be able to recruit when we have a non-union group of people.
So, Mr. Farisi, do we have any individuals that are at the minimum or at the ceiling of these ranges?
We do. We do have three folks at the minimum right now. They were just hired this year, a high school assistant principal, a middle school assistant principal and a coordinator of science.
So they would get an immediate bump?
They would get a .62% increase next year.
Without any kind of evaluation from?
Oh, they are evaluated thoroughly. That we, we typically take performance into account. In this particular case though, you're right, by the very nature of being at the bottom, when the range goes up, those people, it's rare, but those, those couple of people would, because they, they wouldn't fall outside the range, would get that, that slight increase.
So the, and this is more of a unique circumstance because of the timeframe in which this is happening, but Dr. Collins and, and many of us evaluate the staff annually and Dr. Collins determines whether we move forward on any type of compensation level or not.
So I don't have any, I have no objection to increasing the ceiling. I do have an objection to increasing the minimum. In my mind, it's saying they're there and until such time that the organization evaluates that indeed they deserve whatever value that the organization determines. So I don't want to say immediately, I mean, I'm happy, we're currently at 146, fine. I don't want to increase that. On the ceiling side, I don't have a problem with that increasing to the proposed rate. But in my mind, I've got the individuals sitting in Weathersfield and Rocky Hill that are ready to come join us.
Yeah, that's typically how it works. And we typically don't, wouldn't give somebody a raise who didn't deserve it regardless. And that's the benefit of, of not having a union. So in there, in Rocky, I don't want to say the towns, but in those particular towns, you're going to get it whether or not you are doing your job adequately or you are not.
But I don't think we need to increase the bottom. The bottom is the bottom. So it could be $80,000 in my mind. As long as you've got the ceiling of 164, you can bring them in at the rate you believe that they need to be brought in at.
But we typically don't. We typically bring people into the We typically bring people into the bottom.
Isn't that what attracts people to the position, though? The bottom, if that's where they're going to start?
Yes.
They need to know that this is what I will make if I apply for this job that doesn't have a union in Newington compared to the other places that do. So, that's the difference. And that's why you want the bottom to be, that's why you use the bottom to attract the talent.
Correct.
Okay. Fair enough. Any other perspectives, comments? Mr. Tufel?
We step.
Turn your mic on, Mr. Tufel.
It is? How many steps is there between the bottom and the top? We don't have steps. Well, I'm just saying how many.
There aren't. Annually, we're evaluated, and it's determined by the superintendent of schools. There are no steps, we don't have a contract.
Mr. Branda?
Just a quick question. I know you mentioned the comparison was based on the radius of where we are and everything. Would it be helpful at all, or, I don't know, would the information be valuable if we had more of the districts in our reference group to compare to? I don't know. I mean, I know that in terms of the radius, it's not always exact, but just to see more of who we're being compared to.
Yes and no. Typically, when they do, and the reason it's done this way, whenever they do contact negotiations, it's done by county. And so, for instance, the groups that are used in teachers' negotiations are Hartford County, because Stephen's right, the people will kind of, wherever they live, they will put a pin, and it was all, and that's how far they will go, right? So, it's a matter of will they cross the line and go to West Hartford? Will they cross the line? Will they drive to Glastonbury? Are they willing to drive to Glastonbury? Will they drive to New Britain? Or, you know, those kinds of things. So, that's also what you have to look at it, you know. Shelton is in our demographic reference group. I doubt anybody's going to drive.
I was just more curious about the economic perspective rather than the distance of where we are compared to other towns.
And one item of consideration also, just with that, you know, these are just the salary figures, but recognizing that those are administratively contracted groups, they have other benefits afforded to them that maybe are outside of this range that do get put in that we may not. And so, it's always hard to kind of do a straight comparison of what they're getting versus what we aren't getting based on the salary level.
Back to my argument.
Mrs. Strohs.
Again, I apologize if this is not the right time to ask this question. Why is Newington not unionized for their administrators? You can tell me it's not the right time, and I will just.
Oh, sure. That's a great question, and I'm probably not the right one to answer that. But as before I was superintendent, being part of the administrative group, we never felt we needed one. We're a group of professionals, and we feel like we're treated that way, and so we've never felt the need for one. We were treated well by the board, and so we typically don't have those kinds of scrapes. And however, it was discussed, I think a couple of years ago, it was discussed, and it is discussed frequently, I don't want to say frequently, periodically. And I have always said I would stand right behind them if they wanted to organize. I would certainly, I would certainly support that.
Another newbie question. Is it beneficial to not, and I truly, I'm just trying to gather information, is it beneficial to not be unionized as administrators? I'm just curious, I have no idea.
Having come from a district that was unionized, and most of my colleagues around this table have heard my comment, as a professional, I always resented what I called the dance of the lemons, because you have a great deal of professional protection in a union, and you don't have to perform necessarily to your really best, but you will still have a position. And in Newington, we do consider ourselves professionals, and I believe all of my colleagues work and extend themselves, and we hold each other accountable. We're in a district that I worked in that had a union, people said, well, you know, he can't be the building principal, so let's go make him the director of Title I. And that will not happen here.
I only ask because it sounds like, my understanding is, we are looking at these salary prices and saying, well, we're not unionized, so that's going to detract someone. So, I'm just curious, the reason, like, I'm just trying to understand.
And I'll speak a little bit. I've been an administrator almost 20 years in Newington, and much like Dr. Collins, thinking back to those days, it's almost a cultural thing here, that there's this mutual respect between the previous superintendent and the current superintendent. But I will say, when we have brought new administrators on board, I have been asked by them how I feel about that, because they're not so sure if it's going to be a positive or negative, because it's a little scary. And really, it's more about that trust that you have for your superintendent, that you're going to be taken care of. The times that we've come as a group to talk about unionizing have been when there's a feeling in the community that the support is not there. But that's kind of come and gone. Are there benefits to us as a group? Not really to being not unionized. There's no benefit to it, except that there's this feeling of camaraderie around it, I guess. But there's nothing that, like, we're getting anything beneficial out of it that, if you're in a union, you're going to benefit much more from not, than not being in a union because of the protections that a union provides.
Mr. Branda?
One more quick question. Do the administrators, because they're not in a union, do they fall under the same guidelines of getting bumps in salary based on education or anything like that, just like the teachers do?
So, we do have, only for your doctorate.
Okay.
And we have the same clause, Dr. Collins applies the same clause to administrators as to a teacher.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any further comments? Maybe if we could just have one more comment from Mr. Tufel to get back? Now everyone's quiet. What's the, what's the protocol when a board member is present and steps out for a moment to take a vote after having discussion? Do we wait? But, I mean, practically, do we pause for a minute or two? So, we vote with, we vote without him?
I say, let's just talk about it and wait till he gets back.
So, we just talk about him while he's out of the room?
Yeah, I mean, he's gone. I could tell him that, you know, he's just.
Mrs. Stam has a question. There we go.
No, I don't have a question. I'll just make a comment that I, being at the meeting the other night, I do want to say that I appreciate the fact that the administration backed to the table, and this was not the number that we were talking about at that meeting, it was much higher than this. And I do respect the fact that you went back and you actually researched and looked even further and dug deeper and realized that, hey, we don't have to go that high. And you most certainly can have come back and said, but, you know, we should, because it clearly, down the line, in being from an administrator from a union, I'd be one of those people coming in going, all right, you guys, should I be doing this kind of thing? Because it's just, there aren't those protections. And I wouldn't have needed them, I know that I wouldn't have needed them. But I just, you know, those are the things that you consider. And your comment was clear, like, I lived what you just said, the person who couldn't do the job that was given another job was like, you kidding me? You kidding me? So, I really respect that. So, all of that, you know, the way they do it here, I respect that. And the fact that you looked at the numbers again and came back with a different number that you proposed to us the other night, clearly you looked at it and came in with a reasonable, acceptable proposal that I clearly do support.
Yeah, and I do want to thank Stephen for, those, a couple of those numbers came in today, right? So, very recent.
Mr. Branda?
That might answer my question, but is there a reason why New Britain's not on here?
Right.
I was just talking about radius, like, we're talking about radius before, so I was just curious about that.
I would guess not only radius, but also comparable in terms of the makeup of your community. Urban districts get higher salaries just because class sizes are sometimes more challenging, and student populations are more challenging.
I'm with you. I feel like that would have been a good to compare to, we could have used that. Would have been easy to say, well, get New Britain right next door. But, thank you.
[laughing].
Is this where I get up and dance?
Are we still using?
Dr. Braverman.
Are we still using the word DIRG or the abbreviation DIRG?
The demographic reference group. Yes, we are. And from what I, usually they're done every 10 years. And from what I understand, although the state has not released anything officially, we appear to be in DIRG C instead of D now. It's unofficial, completely unofficial, that's what I mean. I was not expecting that. I was expecting to go down, but for, so, I don't know what that means, but we're officially in D.
So, who else is in D or C or wherever we are?
Well, right, it's hard to tell, but I mean, I can tell you who they are now. Weathersfield and Berlin, we're all in the same, we're all in the same DIRG. New Britain is not. West Hartford is not. West Hartford is B. New Britain is I, I believe.
Too many DIRGs.
Mr. Plort, have a question or comment?
Could you explain to me what DIRG is?
Great question.
Demographic reference group. So, what they do is they take a number of factors.
They is the state.
They is, sorry, they is.
They will always be the state.
They will always be the state. That is right. So, they take, there are a number of factors that influence where you sit as a demographic reference group. How many of your citizens went to college? What your annual income is? How your free and reduced lunch population? All of those things, you take a multitude of metrics, and they squash them all together. I'm not even saying it's correct, the way they do it, but it is the way they do it. And then they, you're assigned to a demographic reference group, and that's how you're compared. That's how it works.
Mr. Sylvia, did you have something?
I no longer have a question.
Thank you. Okay. We have exhausted discussion on this issue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion, you raised your hand already. Just for the record, are you an aye or an nay? An aye, okay. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you all again for a good discussion. We are now moving on to G on our agenda, which is the superintendent of schools report.
Thank you, and I will try to be brief in recognition of the time. I'm going to draw your attention again to enrollment, because I think this is very important, and I again want to draw your attention to the bottom of the, under the subtotals, because those are the most important numbers of all. We had projected 49 outplacements, and we are at 54 and rising. And as I have shared with you, one student can be well into the six figures. So, that number is very, very important to watch. The second number, we were projected at 172 magnet school students, and as you remember in my opening of school, we had 201 students. By October 1st, that had dropped to 191. That is the number that is important. October 1st enrollment is what is used to, that we have to pay. You'll notice what typically happens is after that, after October 1st, the numbers will continue to go down. So, from October 1st, we had 191 students attending magnet schools. As of December, we now have 180. You are still responsible for paying for 191 of those students. Preschool is, we projected 57, we're at 65. That again is alarming when you only have a limited number, that is, that is an enormous number of preschool students to have in those classes. So, the grand total, we're up from projected 50 students from projected to now. And that's, that's what I'm saying, saying that. The rest is just wonderful things going on in the district. I'm not going to belabor the point on the smart bus and all of that.
If I may?
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. Dr. Collins, do we have a delta of what those 20, approximately 20 additional magnet students are going to cost us? Based upon what we projected for the 72, and now we're at not 191, so is there a delta there that we should anticipate?
Well, you're going to pay for 191 of those.
Right. But do we have the cost?
Do we recall how many?
I don't know.
How many we projected for in our budget?
Yeah, 172.
And that's what we projected to pay for?
Yeah.
So, do you have an approximation for the additional 19 students, how much that costs?
You want to say 5,000 or so?
5,000 or so, so close to $100,000.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on what Dr. Collins presented right now or other parts of the report? And obviously, if you have other questions specific, just for your knowledge, Dr. Collins is happy to answer other times as well. Seeing no comments, we will move on to item H, public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Our phones are open at 860-665-8736. Again, 860-665-8736. When we do this, do they put the number at the bottom of the screen? That's great. They're so good. They sure are. While we wait for a few seconds, it's a good opportunity to thank the volunteers at NCTV for all of their work behind the scenes broadcasting these, even though they're not in the back of the room anymore, we know they're downstairs, making sure that everything is running smoothly, and hopefully everyone can hear us tonight. There are no members of the public present, the phones are not active right now, which is okay. So, we'll move on to item I, which is remarks by board members, and we can start with Dr. Braverman.
Okay. I'll just, January 18th, Central has agreed to host Newington at their January 18th basketball game. It's a televised game, free, so I mentioned it to Patterson's PTA when I was there the other night. It's free to all the schools, all the students, administrators. It's fun. They do a nice job. Hopefully, we'll be winning.
Great.
So, and just, March 6th is the DECA conference at the AquaTurf, and the Invention Convention will be April 28th, Saturday, April 28th.
Excellent.
I'll keep reminding you all.
Thank you, Dr. Braverman. Mr. Vassell. Mrs. Stam?
Yes, I've earlier, first of all, I want to say, I totally enjoyed the conversation that we had around this table this evening. I, it was fluid, I thought it was good conversation, and I really enjoyed that. I just wanted to let you know all that. But also, during your report from the students, I didn't do anything, say anything then, but I totally enjoyed the play. George Washington's up here, it was wonderful. I brought a friend, it was great. Your cast was clearly, everybody was having a good time, and it was good to see, and you did a great job, too. And then I convinced my husband to go to the Thanksgiving game, like, honest to God, he's never wanted to go before with me. But we had a great time. Emily was there, we had a really good time. I didn't say to the end, but we were winning, winning, and left, and was shocked. When I went to my brother's the next day, he was like, he was football coach for years and years and years, he's like, tell me the score. I'm like, no, it wasn't that. And he's like, because I saw someone on Facebook, they wrote the wrong, you know, he's like, yeah, I know what the score was, but it was congratulations to the football team, it was great to have them win. And then the band, it was really fun to watch the bands, too, and do that. And then, like, Emily disappeared, and I'm like, where'd she go? And at halftime, the, I don't know whether it was spontaneous or not, that we didn't know, but the drum corps is out there, they had like a little competition on the other side of the field. And that was kind of cool to have that camaraderie between the schools, and it was just a fun thing to do. And that was just fun. So, and I want to tell everyone, have a good holiday, thanks. And happy Hanukkah to everybody else, too.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. First, I wanted to tell Mr. Plort, thank you so much for staying, all right? To me personally, it means a great deal to see that kind of commitment, and for you, and I know that Ms. Pratchi had other obligations, but I do welcome you at the table quite a bit. I do appreciate y'all listening to me pontificate. I'm really very interested in trying to find solutions, but, oh, and I did enjoy the play also. So, thank you all very much.
Mr. Plort?
Well, I just want to say thank you for inviting Pratchi and I with such open arms, obviously. It means a lot to us as student representatives to know that we have such a voice in your ears and as well as the entire administration when it comes to students' lives and their education and on a day-to-day basis, but what we, what happens in our schools. So, I really do appreciate that, and I enjoy this, and I'm excited for the rest of the year.
Thank you. Mr. Tufel?
I'd like to congratulate you to move up to the main table. I think you belong there also, and it was cold after the football game.
Thank you. Mr. Branda?
Just, I want to piggyback off what Cindy said, I thought the discussions were great today. I think everybody kind of had an open dialogue, you know, we had some disagreements, but I think we talked them out really well, and thank you all for the information. Emily, Paul, and I got to a-
Emily, Paul and I got to attend the John Patterson Student Council ceremony. It was a lot of fun. It was my first, you know, I was like, "Where do I sit?" And Mike Gatos was like, "Go up on the stage. You're part of the Board of Ed." I'm like, "All right." So, you know, we handed out shirts to the kids and it was cool how they came up and shook our hands and they, you know, this was their big moment. So, that was awesome to attend. And then, the other thing is that hopefully everybody saw, but if not, Martin Kellogg was featured on NBC, mentioning it because it's great when our school district is on for good reasons. But they were there because the team over there surprised a student for his birthday. The security officer, Wayne, drove him to school in the security car. And then, the mascot met him and a bunch of students sang "Happy Birthday" to him. And so, just kudos to Ms. Lambert and the whole team over there for doing something very cool that we should all be proud of. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Braverman. Mrs. Stroes.
I'm going to be quick because it's late. I just want to thank everyone for their patience as I learn in this process. When I say nay, when I'm supposed to say yay, I appreciate it. So, it's been a great process tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Skyon?
All right. So, yeah, I've got notes. So, I got to go to just some cool things around the district. I got to go to two student council inaugurations. And it's always great to see the kids getting involved in government, you know, as that's, you know, basically the same thing that we do here. So, it was pretty exciting to see our students fired up to do good things in their schools. And that was really fun and I'm always grateful to be invited to those events. I would like to thank the staff for the retreat. They provided... You guys provided us with tons and tons of information and conversation that goes a long way in helping us understand what the needs are and what the strengths are and how to... Where our work needs to be done. So, I really appreciate all of your time and effort there. I am super happy to have our student reps at the table. After all, you are the reason that we are here. All of our decisions affect you directly, so I am glad that you are at the big kids' table. Right. Yeah. So, along with Cindy, I also enjoyed the play quite a bit. It was a lot of fun. I bought my tickets online, which made things super easy. I didn't have to wait in line when I got there and I got the best seats ever. I could basically make eye contact with all the kids on stage. So, it was... The seats were great and it was really, really a fun performance. And then, for the football game, it was freezing cold and yes, I did run away at halftime because there was a drum line battle. And it was everything I had dreamed of. It was so cool. It's just, it's so fun to see the kids fired up about music and about their program and an opportunity for them to kind of show off and for each other. And they were all cheering each other on and it was Weathersfield and, you know, it was a battle, but then they're all shaking hands and talking and there's hot chocolate for everybody there. So, it was just fun to see that kind of camaraderie with somebody that's usually, you know, our foe. So, super fun. And then, for the student at Martin Kellogg, I actually got to be there yesterday morning to see it and it was spectacular. The staff there did a really nice job of coming together to celebrate with this... With Ryan and he had a fabulous birthday and it was really nicely put together and it was on the news if anybody saw it.
Wayne hit the siren.
Oh, he did, yes. Lights, a little bit of siren, not a lot, a little bit of siren. But yeah, it was submitted to the news. They did a whole show on it or a whole segment on it yesterday. And it was the number two on the website yesterday. And it had over, almost 9,000 views, the video of it, on Facebook. So, it's going viral. So, good things for the schools. I like that. So, thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful... All of the holidays.
Thank you, Mrs. Skyon. Clearly, from the comments around the table, there is an awful lot happening in Newington public schools. All sorts of extracurriculars, arts and musics, business-related things. We've got some really good stuff going on here and I'm so happy that so many of us have had the opportunity to experience that. And the community at large is also having that experience. I will say, similar to what Cindy said, if tonight's discussion about these issues is indicative of what this board's going to do over the next two years, we are going to be very successful. I'm very pleased with how this evening, when the two of you are fantastic new additions and we said that before, but you're actually proving it now. So, thank you. My challenge to everyone over the break between now and the budget is for future meetings is to be even more prepared. I can certainly stand to do that as well, as I took a half hour at work today to try to get through the budget packet again and I couldn't find it this morning. So, we could all use more preparation.